Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Martin Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. With heads bowed and eyes closed in reverence to his utmost his highest. Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, just first of all, asking you to forgive us of our sins, Lord God. Lord, we know we're not perfect, Lord God, and we live in an imperfect world, Lord God. Lord, I ask you to pray for the world, Lord God, the Middle East, Lord God. Pray for this country and its leadership, Lord God. Pray for this state and the leadership. Pray for this community of New Iberian surrounding areas in this leadership, Lord God. We ask that you pray, Lord God, and touch our children, Lord God, their hearts and their minds as they go into this summer, Lord God, with a new beginning, Lord God, for those that are gone off to the military, those that are gone off to college and other places, Lord God. We ask that you be with them, Lord God, and their parents, Lord God, encourage them and empower them, Lord God, to support their kids, Lord God, Lord God, so that we can live in a better place, Lord God. We thank you for this council, Lord God. We thank you for our constituents, Lord God. We praise you and we worship you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Roll call.
May I approach you, I'm Ricky Goncalo.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Darrell.
Here.
Thank you. We have no coming cards. We will move on to item two, two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, which will be published on May eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. Is there any discussion on our minutes of April sixteen? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item three A.
Special ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect funds for K nine Narcotics grant.
This is a fifteen thousand dollar grant. I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Anyone from the public to comment on this item? Seeing none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, thank you. Now I need the main motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcot and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Item four A.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-two, a resolution selecting a contractor for disaster recovery services and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
All right, we took bids on this and Pelicans is the low bidder. We put all the bids in the packet and so before we have a discussion, I need a motion.
Move.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman David Broussard, sorry. Wasn't looking up. Yes, ma'am.
So was it close? Because I mean, I was trying to compare these prices and it looked like some of them were a lot lower than what I saw on.
Right, when you look at the main part of it, which is the how much per load and all of that, they were, the cubic yard, they're low. If you look at some of the man hour prices, they kind of went all over the place. Like at first I was compared, I don't know why, man with a chainsaw. Okay, so I went through everyone and I just picked different items and said, let me compare that, let me compare this. But the big thing is those loads, it's per yard. Now, again, I brought all the bids, like I always do, so we could talk about it. There's no secret, I'm on the TV and it's all good because everything we do is public. At the last meeting, you know, when Pelicans is here tonight, we had a discussion about some Pelican issues and how they would resolve them. So there's no secret to that. I talked to Roddy and I talked to Tommy and said, okay, if I trust you with this, you know, where's my assurances? I mean, I'm being honest. So they said, we'll bring in a partner. So they have and they're here tonight. Roddy couldn't be here, he's at some convention, but they would bring someone in who would assist them, that does this all over the place. We have, that's where I'm heading in a second. So, you know, we have other, the big, the big decision we have to make, and then I promise I'll let everybody talk after that, is when we pick somebody who's totally from out of town, we worry that if they get hit by a hurricane in their area, they're not coming.
Right.
Or they're going to put us on the back burner.
Right.
Okay, so what I thought was, give me a combination. So they, you know, Pelicans is local, we already have them in a contract, we're already here, they have some equipment here. But again, we want to have some assurances that it's going to get done because just remember, if it doesn't get done, I'm gonna do it. If it doesn't get done, I'm gonna take Public Works and I'm gonna spend a fortune and I'm gonna get it done. We have monitors and we already picked them, the same Bay Road Habits who does it all the time. So I mean, if I had to, could we do it? Yes, would it put a strain on everything else because we would do nothing except hurricane cleanup? That's why you get a contractor in. So I'm done, but I just want you to kind of think about whoever we pick, we got to make sure they're going to show up. So if that's okay, I'll call y'all up. And the important in crime is Mr. Leroy.
Yeah. Leroy Landry's with Pelican also.
He didn't want to come up.
We hired him about three years ago.
That's all.
And he'll work for us if a hurricane hits or planning for the hurricane, the planning stages, getting with the mayor, getting with the federal monitor and stuff. I've been knowing Jeremy for about nine years now. He's with CTC, they're about the fifth largest debris contractor in the United States. They've done work in thirty-one states. I'll let him talk about his company if you have any question for me after that. And I told the mayor upfront, if I couldn't get Jeremy working to do the job, we'll work a bid on it. So I contacted Jeremy and we worked out a deal and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Hey, guys, I'm Jeremy Britton, one of the owners of CTC Disaster Response. Again, like Tommy said, we've worked in thirty-one states. I personally worked in Canada for debris removal. This is all we've done for the last probably fourteen years. So some of my clients in the past have included the city of Oklahoma City, the city of Tulsa, Oklahoma, city of Carolina Beach, North Carolina, Amoco County, North Carolina, Broward County, Florida. We do hold a lot of prepositions across the country. However, we've, you know, in this general area, we don't have a lot of contracts. So, you know, obviously if we go, well, Pelican goes under contract with you guys, then you guys become a priority for us. So I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have, but.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Whatever.
I wasn't sure if you was gonna throw that at me or not.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Not yet.
I don't know why I have this in my hand, okay.
Not yet.
No, so what's the closest location of trucks do you have to Louisiana or to New Iberia?
Some local subcontractors. I've used a company down the road here called Delcon Construction. I don't know if any of you guys familiar, he's actually went all over the country doing some pushwork for me as well. So, you know, obviously your white line, you know, cut and toss, road clearance, that's the hourly rates that you guys were discussing earlier. But as far as debris trucks, you know, we've got subcontractors within thirty minutes that own their own debris trucks. One of the largest manufacturers of debris trucks in the United States is one of my exclusive subcontractors. And I think he owns about sixty of his own. So, you know, we've got some of our own equipment as well. We rely a lot on subcontractors, not totally. But, I mean, if, and you guys have seen it, if a hurricane hits, y'all see all the big trucks show up to town like a circus and we're just one of the ringleaders of that circus.
Let's find out, ask a question.
You had a question?
But Jeremy, if a hurricane was to occur, are y'all solely responsible for picking debris or is Pelican gonna assist y'all in the recovery efforts?
I'll let Tommy speak a little more on that.
Is it a joint effort, Tommy, or solely?
What we doing is, the reason we have Jeremy is to do the hurricane work. I have Leroy's gonna be the contact and me. But I don't want it to interfere with Snook and all his work, the garbage got to be picked up, the recycling got to be picked up, the debris piles that we can pick up, we'll pick up. Sure, if he needs assistance, we also have trucks in other areas that we can bring here, but it's solely be with Jeremy. That way our operation doesn't disrupt.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a few questions and I didn't look at the fine print, I looked at the numbers, but it says seventy-two hours after the hurricane, y'all would be, you know, getting involved and start cleaning up.
I'll be honest, if, I mean, the way we operate, if, obviously if awarded the contract, we would want to set up a meeting and have a blue sky day meeting with your monitor, you know, obviously Tommy, you know, Pelican, myself, representatives for the city, you know, basically your main players, you know, Public Works, the folks that we're going to be working with when something happens. If we see you guys are in the comb, you know, and we feel like impact's going to be, you know, inevitable, we're already going to have resources staged. So, you know, and this is, I mean, it's not specific here, we did this all over. Right. So, so with resources staged, right after the winds die down, you should start seeing, you know, equipment or myself, Tommy, come in and help you guys do damage assessments. Obviously, we need to get an idea that you guys are going to get, you know, a D R, presidential declaration, you know, to know where your money's coming from. So we'll come in, help you guys do the damage assessments and determine what, what resources we're going to need. And then at that point in time, you know, go ahead and bring the resources in, once the monitors have the trucks certified, we can go to rolling. I'll just tell you, right after Hurricane Florence, we had the first debris job started in the state of North Carolina and we were the first one to finish with the project.
So do y'all like, when y'all come in, do y'all start and say, we're going to do eight hours a day, ten hours? Or do you do sunrise, sunset? Do y'all, I mean, how do y'all propose to do it? I mean.
Obviously, that depends on the magnitude of the storm, but ideally, most of my guys are from out of town, so they're here to work. They like to go sunrise to sunset. So we normally call it like a seven to seven, seven to six, you know, but if, you know, we like to work seven days, but also at the, you know, that's at the city's discretion.
And then, second thing, because we went through a couple hurricanes with another company. When we have a spot to dump the debris, you know, do the city, the parish, who makes that decision? Can that decision be made prior to a hurricane hitting here? I know that was always an issue of where we can bring this stuff.
Well, that's why I would like to have a blue sky day meeting. And that way we can be better prepared, not only you guys, we can be better prepared and to know. And if it's a small event, we may want to take all this to a landfill, you know, wash our hands of it. But it may be a large event where you guys have trees down everywhere and we need to, we need to open a temporary dump site and keep it out of a landfill, those landfill capacity may not be there.
So, and then the mayor would be the one involved in saying, hey, this is what we need first, this street, this street, this street, we need that opened up. How does that play a way, y'all start, and what's the priority?
I can answer that one because we've worked with Bay Road Habits and John in particular through quite, I mean, we had three in one year.
Yeah.
So we got a good little system that, you know, if they choose to, you know, hire you, you're going to fit in pretty much with our system and we'll have a meeting and we'll figure it out. But the way it normally works, as soon as the wind's not even finished, I got Public Works out getting my streets open. So Public Works is out getting the streets, I sleep here every hurricane, I'm on the road, John is quick on the road. And so we're already looking, we're already talking to each other and, you know, we've gone through, you know, we had a great debris contractor for years, a local guy, and the wind would be blowing and we were racing to see who could get out there first, okay, while the wind was still blowing. So, you know, he was wonderful, he spoiled the hell out of us for quite a few years. Well, he quit doing that. So that's why we're on the search. But, but we've come up with a pretty good plan, we'll definitely know way ahead of time, and you're right, whoever gets this, I'm gonna call the meeting pretty quick. You've got a huge advantage having Mr. Leroy because he ran my Public Works department and ran the parishes before that. He knows where every, everything is, you know, you've got somebody.
Snook, Snook is still licensed for debris and landfill from the parish, so he's still on board with Pelican.
Good, good. But I feel like, you know, the first thing we do is coordinate a meeting. We do look at our major streets to make sure that they're open first. We get the debris off to the side and then some of the first stuff we pick up is to get that out of the way and make sure our streets are safe. And then we go from there and, and, you know, but we'll have a pre-plan for sure.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So, let's say you guys are hired by, I'm assuming you're working through Pelican. So I'm assuming Pelican's in charge, I mean, who's the project manager over here?
It's, it's going to be a Pelican representative, that's ultimately the contract is with the city.
Leroy Landry?
I'm sorry, I don't know, Mr. Leroy, I didn't live here, so I don't know him.
Any questions you have, I'm here. Leroy can come up, Leroy Landry is our, will be our project manager here.
Okay.
I'll be here also in case he needs something, it's chaos the first couple of weeks, you know.
He had Joe's job for many years.
I heard his name before, I just, I've never met him.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, Leroy's on board.
There's the legend, there's the legend right there.
The first few hours, I'm not, it used to be seventy-two.
Yes, sir.
It might be changed, I just asked John, he's not sure. But that's a hundred percent to y'all. So y'all want to do as much as y'all can to collect some money.
That's right.
And then the contractor comes in.
Yep. You're exactly right, that's why we get out there, you and I would be out there in the wind because that was more money we collected.
Okay. Just trying to, you know, whenever there's a subcontractor, want to know who's the project manager, who's in charge, who's going to make the decisions because.
Well, I'm gonna tell them where to go.
Okay.
Whatever the mayor or whoever wants something, you know.
And you're working with Pelican?
I'm working for Pelican.
Yeah, and the contract would be, Pelican's bid the project, they're bringing them in as a subcontractor, but Pelican's bid the project. So our contract would be with Pelican.
We actually partnered together. I'm really subcontract, we partnered together.
I believe we've actually bid this contract for the last few years as well, we just, you guys are local.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because he also said that they use subcontractors as well.
Right, but they do bring in truck, people do, there's a bunch of layers, it's just like a general contractor project, there is a bunch of layers.
Yeah. Okay, just want to have clarity when the storm hits.
Sure, sure. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, why is there a need for a partnership at all, especially if you guys normally would bid us out?
Well.
I mean, I guess I thought it would be easier just to go through.
Pelican's has a little bid, we had a process.
I think she means, why didn't they just bid for it? Yes, that's what I mean, yeah.
But I think Pelican's was cheaper.
But he didn't bid for it, right?
Do what?
She means not as a partner. Company did not bid for, did not put in a bid, right?
I don't, I don't believe, we actually bid it.
No, you didn't bid it this year, I think you have in the past.
We have in the past.
I mean, I put it out there.
Okay.
You guys didn't like me the first few years.
We've been having a relationship nine years together.
Okay. Yeah, it just seemed like an extra step, almost.
Make a statement, like the way debris monitoring works with the, with, everybody's a subcontractor. Gordon, Gordon, almost everybody in Gordon's crew is a subcontractor, even when he was doing it.
Bunch of layers.
His, half of his pickup crew is subcontractors, his trucks are subcontractors, so there's, there's no one person in the state that can basically be full-time do this because it's not a full-time thing, it's storm dependent. So most of these companies have relationships with other companies, you know, down the line, companies that own trucks, companies that own equipment, and, I mean, they basically chase storms, tornadoes, hurricanes, you know, flooding, I mean, that's what they do.
Okay, that makes sense now that you explained it that way.
It's a horrible thing.
Yeah, no general contractor does our, does the whole job.
It just confused me that Pelican's bid it, but then they partnered with somebody else who didn't put a bid in.
We're fortunate, we haven't had a hurricane in a couple of years, so, you know.
Knock on wood.
If you have a contractor, that's all they do, you know, they're, they're basically looking for something to do. But, you know, even with your previous contractor, I mean, almost three quarters of his crew was all subcontractors.
Okay.
So, you know, and that's, I mean, that's typically how this industry works. I mean, he has his stuff, but he has contacts with probably dozens of other companies that do the exact same work and they all work together.
Okay.
It's just like when the power companies, you know, they band together, they borrow, they borrow steel people from each other, you know, it's kind of the same thing.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, ma'am, just like, I mean, just, I heard everything I needed to hear, but basically, we, we're just trying to get somebody local. That's what I heard you say last time.
As local as I can, because I want to make sure they're here right away. But, but the partnership and having somebody who just does this, we've been in other instances and other people that bid and they did other work as well. And then I'm kind of like, you know, what, who you law to, you can only serve one thing at a time. So this, in a way, it's a kind of a different deal, I'll give you that, but it gives us the best of both.
It seems like it's an advanced method of what's going to take place anyway.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
So are the other companies that bid for the project, uh, local? Are they local?
No.
Okay, they're not local?
No, I mean, some of them are in Louisiana, some of them are all kind of other places, but nobody's local.
Okay.
Florida, all over the place.
Okay, just checking, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Do they have relationships with them? I mean.
He might know them, I don't know. They all might end up here, but that's, the more help, the better.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all. Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please.
Make a motion to select somebody?
Yeah, because we just voted to look at it, that's right. Okay, well then I need a motion, if someone so chooses.
Second.
Okay, so that motion is for Pelican's and.
Approve the contract.
Approve the contract. Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Ricky Goncalo, and who was the second? I was.
Martin.
Councilman Martin Lewis. Is there any discussion on this motion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. We'll be setting up a meeting. Thank you.
Ma'am, real quick, that, that, that meeting, what's the name of it? I never heard that, the blue one.
Sky.
Blue sky, in other words.
Everything's perfect.
Everything's good, not when there's a hurricane.
A blue sky.
Like, while the weather's good. Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.
Good to see you, Mr. Leroy.
See ya.
Okay, four B.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-three, a resolution appointing Patrick Norris to the municipal government employee civil service board for the remainder of a five-year term to fill a vacancy created by the expiration of term for Willie Jefferson, whose term expired on April first, twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Whoa.
Oh, my bad.
I have a motion, it was crazy, Councilman David Broussard and Councilman Martin Lewis, I mean, it was kind of everybody wants. All right. Discussion?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
First question is, why did they fill, I mean, there are two applicants.
Yes.
So why did they fill out different types of applications? They're not the same. One filled out an appointment questionnaire, the other one filled out municipal government and public civil service board application questionnaire. So it's not, I mean, you can't do apples to apples because they're not the same.
One picked up an application?
I don't know, I'm just asking because when I was trying to compare them, it wasn't the same application. So on the other applicant, there wasn't a place for him to really kind of talk about his experience, whereas with Mr. Norris, he had an opportunity to put that information in there. So it's hard to kind of compare apples to apples when they didn't fill out the same information.
Okay. One's an old app and one's a new app, so I don't know where one of them got it. But, yes, sir.
Yeah, I noticed the same thing and I pulled up the municipal civil service statute and the questionnaire that Mr. Gotrow filled out has the questions in it that apply to the qualifications for this office.
So the other one isn't?
The other one is, the other one doesn't answer the questions, but if you have the candidate here, he can answer the questions. And if the candidate is qualified and recommended by the mayor, then the candidate is submitted to the vote of the council. And it's an upper town vote, and if you say no, then the position's vacant.
We don't even have that old application, because you sent, I don't know where the old application came from. Yeah, because you don't even have that one.
I mean, I don't know what either one looks like, I'm just, based on this, when I was reviewing them, they weren't the same.
That's fine.
Well, but the Gotrow application has the questions that are in the statute. So if the candidate can answer the questions that are in the statute, then I think you've answered that issue. And those would be things that would be disqualifying, you know, elected office, so on and so forth. So, you know, I don't think, I don't think this is going to hold up the process if we can ask Mr. Norris those questions.
We can, I had planned on calling.
Well, let me ask, before we do that.
Okay, sure.
I don't, is Mr. Gotrow in the room?
No.
Did he know to come tonight?
Yeah, he filed out an application.
But did he know it was on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah. Yes, sir.
But Mr. Gotrow's not before the council?
No, he's not my, he's not my selection.
No, so there's no decision tonight that could be made that would elect Mr. Gotrow?
Nope.
So you, so you're just.
I don't have a button and there's a whole lot of things I don't get to pick, but this is one that it's really clear in the rules that I make a pick. You can vote it up or down, but, but there's no, like, you can't substitute somebody else. I would make another pick, or I would pick the same person again, or I would, you know how the parish does sometimes? Oh, I'd be an ugly, but sometimes they keep putting the same person, but basically, it's, it's, this is an occasion that is my pick.
Okay.
So there's no substituting, and in this case, I do know both gentlemen, you know.
So if Mr. Norris doesn't meet the qualifications, or.
Then I'd have to pick again.
If he's turned down, then he's not approved.
Right, right.
But there is no motion to approve anybody else.
Some of the questions are answered and there's a new one.
Okay.
Unless you want to bring him up?
Yeah, sure, I mean, I'd like him to come up anyway, but if when everybody's ready. Anybody has any other questions right now?
I guess the only one I have is, you make the picks, right?
Yes, sir, on this, not, not all the time, very rarely do I get to pick.
How many board members on civil service, five?
Five.
Five, okay, you make every pick?
No, no, I make, this is, this happens to be my pick.
This is the mayor's pick, okay, so.
Yes.
Kind of answer my question, I know Ms. Willie Mae Jefferson is an African-American woman, retired school teacher.
Right, when I came in, you know, I had a choice if I wanted to keep her or if I wanted to make another selection, and she was great.
And you kept her?
Oh, yeah, she was great.
All right, because I was more concerned, was it a minority seat? And is there a minority seat outside of this?
Not really.
For civil service?
No.
I know a lot of the boards and commissions have to have a minority, business owner, minority, whatever.
Right.
And some of them have to have women, you know.
Right.
You know, some have to have bankers, all that kind of stuff. So this isn't that, right?
No.
Okay, it's your pick.
Only, only this one position, yes.
Okay.
Which was Ms. Willis.
Got you.
I can, I can explain.
Why don't you, yeah, I want everybody to know.
Okay. So one member is appointed by the mayor and board of trustees of the city of New Iberia for a term of five years. And the charter says that the mayor proposes and the council votes on those, just like every other department head type.
Department head, yeah.
Yeah, or, or other committee member. Then one member is appointed by the employees of the New Iberia, employees of New Iberia covered by the provisions of the Civil Service Act. Which member may be an employee of the city of New Iberia covered by this act? So it's an employee choice.
Yeah, that's margin, and she got elected by the employees.
Right, then there are three other choices that are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by the board of trustees. And that comes from a list of names submitted by the executive committee of the Iberia Parish Bar Association and the executive committee of the New Iberia Chamber of Commerce. It has been that way forever. Now, a lot of the time, there's suggestions that are made and so on and so forth, but the mayor's got a choice, employees got a choice, and then appointment from a list for the other three, and there are five total. But there's no, no reserved minority spot or anything like that, there's a reserved employee spot.
Just so I'm clear, on the three that the chamber and the bar association send us a list, do we just keep voting till we get one, or do I pick from that list?
Well, you can nominate, but the council has to approve.
That's what I thought, so I'm not really picking those other, good, that's fine, I think that's fair.
None of them are picked by the mayor himself without anybody else, none of them are picked by the council, it's mayor and council.
Right, but that, when the chamber or the bar association sends somebody, then we just weed through it until, it's not like this one position that can't substitute. On the other one, it's who gets the votes? Pretty much, or do I pick? I don't know, I never had to do this.
I'm sorry, run that by me again?
Okay, when the chamber and the bar association sends in a list of names.
Uh huh.
Okay, I just bring them to the council, do I make any recommendations, or do we just go back and forth until somebody's selected? So somebody has four votes? selected, so somebody has four votes? It might just send one name.
I think we start with the list. And then the mayor has to pick from that list.
That's what I was wondering.
And then the council votes on the, on the selection.
Okay, but if one gets voted down, do we move to the next one?
No, you select them unless you give, if you want the same one, you can.
Okay, I just didn't know, I never had to do, this is the only one I ever, I mean, I only knew I had one.
Yeah, let me look at my.
No, but I just wanted to know. I mean, if we're gonna discuss it, I'd like everybody to have a clear understanding of what we do.
No, that's, that's helpful.
But the general rule under the charter.
Uh huh.
So, we look at the statute, then we look at the charter, the general rule under the charter talks about different boards and commissions. And then it says all others, which is what this falls under. The mayor appoints, subject to council approval. So, you have to choose from that list, you can't choose somebody who's not on that bar association chamber list.
Okay.
But you choose from that list.
I just didn't know if I only chose this one spot, or if I had, if that comes up again, if I had to choose again, or if it was a free-for-all at the council meeting, I'm just curious.
No, no, I mean, for, for the other three, you gotta pick from that list, but then it comes to the council, for this one, you pick from the universe.
Okay, now, now I understand, I just want to make sure, and I want everybody else to understand.
And what.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what I'd like to do, and well, we had this, I mean, I remember when the parish went through.
Yeah, you remember that, they like, couldn't quit.
When, when Nicodemus Harrison got elected, they had that, and then the city had one years ago with a park director, where a certain mayor brought up park people and they just, you know, the, the council kept batting off the foul balls. And that's the way it worked. What I'd like to do.
That's funny.
If you don't mind, I'd like to go over what the qualifications are in the statute.
Sure.
So, we can, you know, ask this guy if he meets those qualifications, so. Uh, to be eligible for appointment to serve as member of the board, a person shall be a citizen of the United States of America.
You wanna get him up to answer?
Well, I mean, he can say, he's there, he can listen, and he can say yes or no.
Okay, let's do that, then we can, you know, I mean, we all need to hear it, I don't wanna do it twice.
A resident of the city of New Iberia for at least five years, next proceeding such appointment. And shall, at the time of his appointment, be a qualified voter of the municipality. No member of the board shall have been during a period of four years immediately preceding his appointment or during his tenure, a member of any local, state, or national committee of a political party, or an officer or a member of a committee in any factional or political club or organization. No member of the board shall be a candidate for nomination of election to any public office or hold any other public office or position of public employment, except that of notary public military officer or a member of the faculty of any educational institution, except that a member of the board appointed by the employees of the city of New Iberia who may hold a position of public employment. So.
Okay. So now Pat needs to answer all those questions. One yes followed.
And the reason I'm going through that list is because the Gotrow, if I can call it that, application, talks about those questions, but doesn't state it exactly the way the statute does.
Okay.
So.
Hi, Pat.
Okay, hello.
Let's, we need an answer on all those questions.
Yes.
Okay, well, for what he was reading, I think I can say yes to everything, uh, if I'm clear on it. Uh, but not having it in front of me here, uh, but for the most part, yes, uh. My answer would be yes to, to everything.
Except, I think, except for eight and nine.
Yeah, you didn't work for the city.
Right. No, I never held any politi- I don't hold a political position, I don't have a.
They all not yes.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't, uh, I don't have any elected, uh, positions, anything like this.
You don't belong to any political organization.
No, like, be specific, but like.
Like. Which one are we talking about? I'm, I'm asking the, the city attorney.
That's fine.
Any factional or political club or organization.
So, like a Republican committee, Democratic committee, Independent committee, no, ma'am.
Okay.
No, no, um, and factional, you know, means political party, I think. Political club or organization. Doesn't mean he can't have an expressed opinions, cuz everybody does that in this town.
Right.
Well, the whole, yeah, that's, that's how we run.
But, the reason I wanted to read that was to make sure that what we're looking at as the criteria matches the statute, cuz the two applications, one's better than the other, neither one's perfect.
And I'm glad that, I probably need to do one that matches everything, because like I said, the one that Laney had that she gave was different. We don't even have that one, the other one's really old, so what we're gonna have to do is take the statute and redo our application. Cuz one says, have you been a resident of the inside city limits, and this one says residence for five years. Yeah. Same thing, just a little different, and you've been both. Yeah, no, I, I'm glad you pointed that out.
Yeah, and the statute has a little difference.
Okay, well, we're gonna follow the statute then and make a new application that follows the statute.
Okay. Question.
So, that's where I got it, yes, ma'am.
What's the current makeup? That was my question too. Good.
Current makeup.
Out there versus the board.
Yeah.
Okay, um. I don't know that. Alright.
The what?
RG's on for. Yeah, 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 Dan asked for it, read it off, Dan.
I don't know, I don't give him glasses.
Uh huh, I put him on the spot.
Yeah, don't, don't mess up.
Mr. Craig is the lawyer?
Right, right, Craig Kohar, he's, he's.
Getting off, correct?
What's that?
No.
No.
Oh, she's on there now?
She's on there now.
Uh, William Kyle?
He's on there now.
Ms. Segura?
Yes, that's Mar.
RG, that's.
Who's our employee, right.
And then that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
Any African-Americans? She was.
Angelique.
No.
Ms. Jefferson.
Angelique.
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 Angelique, yeah. Okay, okay, um, so that leaves one African-American on the five-member board.
Yes.
What's the percentage of Af- African-Americans that work for the city versus?
Hmm, that's a good question. Um. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure, now you got me curious, I, I don't know.
Probably sixty-five, seventy.
You think it's that high?
If I had to guess.
Yeah.
Just riding around seeing who in the trucks and who working.
Well.
Okay, that's a guess, guys.
That's a guess, and, and different, and different, and different departments. Yeah, different departments, different departments are different.
Agreed.
You know, but I, I, that's a good question.
I mean, I'd like to know that the board represents the people, the same, yeah, the same percentage of population of the people that they're going to be representing, so I think that ought to, you know, factor into our decision.
Well, when it comes from the chamber and the bar association for three, we, we don't really con- control that. Would you have to see who they send us?
I understand.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
So.
As Jeff said, as Jeff said, I only pick from the universe once.
I mean, that might be something we might need to change the statute to re- reflect the population of the city.
The population or employment?
City employees.
I mean, and, but the employment is always a moving target, it's changing on a, on a weekly, daily basis, you know?
I know, but we can get an average. We've been having city employees for years and years. I, I'm just saying, just because we wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing and that we are improving the board as we have an opportunity to do that, not just anything about Mr. Norris. Um, this is just about the board in general.
And I just really want people that propel us forward and kind of hit our challenges, cuz, boy, we have them. You know, we, we know municipal civil service is the one area that the pay is too low, and we gonna have to get creative to get our people, you know, more money. And so, my biggest thing is just to make sure that I have a board that is kind of got that same mission, cuz, you know, I mean, we all limited on the time we get to spend here, and, and my biggest thing, we've, we've raised, we've given raise, and thank y'all for doing that. We've given raises already, but, you know, my, uh, my big challenges are what our laborers make, our starting pay there, I got one other one that I'm not ready to talk about yet, but I always tell y'all anyway, you know, my firemen started ten dollars and something an hour, I, I got, that's, that's another board, okay?
Right.
But, we do have issues that, you know, we have to look at creative ways to get that pay up, and I do think that the board can be a big help in that, you know?
I think, and, just so, just my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, I think, though, we look for both. We look for somebody who can probably meet both criteria, and then if we can't find somebody like that, then it's the next best thing, but.
And the job responsibilities of the employees is big.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But.
So, I'm looking for, I, I think this is a great.
A lot of experience managing large groups of people, you know, I'm on the council, so I'm, I'm not even advocating for something like that, you know that. I'm just saying, there are people that are minorities that actually do fit the description of the kind of person you need on the board to help deliver what you're trying to deliver for the employees, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we definitely gonna come looking for you in about six more years.
Whatever, Marlowe. Councilman Lewis.
That's pretty funny.
Be careful.
Yes, sir.
The statute, this is a legislative statute that was written for New Iberia.
Okay.
In nineteen sixty-six.
Oh, now you know it needs to change.
But it's been amended from time to time, but what I'm saying is, if, and, and, you know, I'm seeing some changes here that were in the nineties and after, so. Um, if you want to change the rules that govern this board, the basic rules, that's a legislative decision.
We could do that.
And that's what I'm pointing out.
Right.
And it's not, it's not code of ordinances, it comes from the legislature.
Good to know.
Okay, so, I don't know of any statute that's got set aside like that for boards like this, but, I can't, I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just saying we can't do it.
Gotcha.
Oh, it have to go to the state legislator?
Okay, we can't, that's not something we can change.
Gotcha.
Not something we can change, but, um, that, that's not to say that individual councilmen don't have uh, judgments to make based on whatever their values might be and whatever they think it might be necessary.
Well, it's like every other issue, that's why each have a button, I just wish I had a button, but, you know.
I've been to hundreds of these meetings and I don't have a button.
Yeah, yeah, I only have one when somebody's not here. Well. Yes, sir. I just wanna, uh, you know, after we vote, I want to thank Mr. Norris and everybody serves on these boards. Oh, it's true, it's true. And this board with the civil service board, to me, is one of the most important boards, zone, every board's important. But we talking about people's lives, their salaries, their benefits, their, their home, everything. Yeah. And me and Mary, like, we, I've been in a long time, and we fight this, we fight this, and we don't go nowhere. And we finally getting a few people that I think are aggressive that we wanna make it better. We only here for a short time, as he mentioned, it takes a long time to make things happen, but we need to make it so things will be better for the employees, cuz it's all about the employees, it's not about us. They, they, look, we, none of us up here, we can't look good if we don't have those employees, and we can't get the goals we want if those people aren't working and they aren't happy. And so, everything we do, you know, when you think about all the calls you get, cuz I get them too, or we talk about it, it's all up to those employees, we're not out there fixing it, they are, you know, so that is gotta be our focus, is, is a way to continue to, and we, and look, y'all have made improvements, I don't want anybody to get knocked out here that, you know, somebody's gonna watch it and say, well, they haven't done anything, we have made as a council a lot of improvements and, and giving them equipment, and giving them raises, and giving good department heads, and, you know, the tools we need to, to, for them to advance and to get the work done, but, you know, Dan's not wrong, we, we do need to do more. You know?
So.
I've got one question for Mr. Pat, Mr. Pat, how many, how many employee, and I say mister, I don't know, I'm fifty-three, I always just. Uh, some people get offended by mister when they round your age, but. But, but I know you, I know your son, so, that's where that comes. Uh, how many employees y'all got at Norris?
Right now, we're running about, uh, it varies wherever, anywhere from about ninety-five to a hundred and five.
So, you're very familiar with keeping employees?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Paying them and all that good stuff.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll cover some of that when I kind of do my little dog and pony show here, whatever, but, uh, anyway.
Cuz you have a great business acumen, and if I were to look for a minority, I would ask that it be in, in the future going forward, if we get an opportunity to change legislation, where they have to have a minority on the board, I would look that it be a minority business owner, somebody that has manages, managed business.
But not necessarily just a business owner, because you could be.
I, I hear you.
I was a director of a department, I had.
Well, not a business owner, but somebody with business acumen, somebody that know how to hire, fire, and make sure people stay on a job. Not somebody that's just coming up here waving signs, opposed to saying, we need more for us, but hey, we need more for everybody, and I'm representing us.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be a business owner, you could actually have people who've actually worked in corporate America.
When we get there, if me and you still here, and when we get there, we can do that part, but I would just hope it be somebody that's about business and getting employees to work and work for a reasonable salary, that's all, that's what I would look forward to in the future, not now, cuz we can't do it. It's about Mr. Pat and the mayor's, the mayor's appointment.
But, well said, it's what I'm trying, it's what we trying to do. So, what we trying to do, anybody else? Anything? Then, uh, Pat, you wanna tell us something before they vote?
Well, hopefully I can answer some of the questions that you may have and what I'm gonna say right here, but, you know, I was asked to come here tonight and introduce myself for those of you I have not met before, I am Patrick Norris, and I am applying for the civil service position. Um, I'm born and raised here in Iberia, lived here my whole life. Uh, been married to my wife Lisa Olivier for forty-four years, we have three boys, uh, eight grandchildren. They all reside here in Iberia, have always resided here in Iberia, and the three boys work in our, in our family business, a company I started a little over twenty years ago. Uh, I'm a member of Sacred Heart Catholic Church on, on the Tesh, brought to the Kiwanis Club, member of IDF Industrial Foundation, but, uh, not the board, but a member of the, uh, of the organization right here. And, uh, you know, a lot of people ask me over the years, why don't, why don't I move to Youngsville, why don't I move to Broussard? Uh, things supposed to be better over there. Well, I believe in our city. This is where I wanna be. I wanna support our city. I think I've been able to give back to our city. And I wanna continue to do it. Just some of the things that my wife and I have been blessed to do for our city, we support the PEPFLEX, we sponsor the baseball fields, boys' baseball teams, girls' softball teams, boys and girls' soccer teams. Our, our most recent thing, uh, of course, you know, we do the, the Live Oak Festival in the, in the park, the Bay Utesh Museum, all things related to the city of New Iberia, not just the parish, but to the city also, I do things in the parish, but also do things in the city. My business is in the parish, I live in the city, been here my whole life. Uh, our latest thing that we helped sponsor was the, uh, Boys and Girls Club, new, new, uh, club opening in West End Park. Uh, we have committed to a three-year commitment to that, to make sure that they have financial funding going forward, to make sure that the club is solid and can be, uh, funded going forward to give it an opportunity to, to succeed in, in that, in that area. Most importantly, you know, why am I doing it, what do I bring to the table? You know, I think my past experiences is hopefully going to, uh, enlighten you of to what I've done. Um, I work for private business, I work for large billion-dollar companies, public companies. I've held multiple directorships at different levels for these billion-dollar companies. Approximately twenty year, years ago, I left the public sector and started my own, my own company here in Iberia Parish, located at the airport. We are a machine shop, uh, manufacturing company. Why did I bring my company here? The best place for my company probably would have been in Houston, but I wasn't moving to Houston. I lived here, I was born here, I worked here, I wanted my company to be here, I wanted to support my community here. Over the years, you know, I've, I've had the responsibility of having to manage over two hundred and forty people under my direct management responsibilities. I've had to deal with HR issues, I've had to deal with workers' comp claims, approving HR manuals, employee pay, employee benefits, approving employee manuals, writing employee job duties. And on top of that, having the financial responsibility of running the company. Ladies and gentlemen, I feel I can be an asset to the City Service Board and help the city, whatever needs, need to be addressed, to do what's right, either for the employee or for the city. I believe in addressing an issue and not running from it. And I don't care who you are, which you are, which agenda is, which your race is, or whatever is what's right. If it's an employee issue, the employee needs to know what he has to do to change. If it's a city issue, they need to make it right for the employee, but you have to address things head-on and address it. With that being said, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
You know, when you, when we all up here looking for positions on, on any board, we always say we want the best qualified person. And we always begging for people that are qualified to serve on these boards to make a difference, well, I'll take Mr. Norris's name off the podium right here. I want those qualifications representing my civil service board, that's what I want on it. I don't care the color of the skin, the race, or whatever, but that's qualifications that can make a difference, right there. And I think those kinda, those are gonna move this city forward, people like that, those qualifications, and, and he has my support.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, clearly, Ms. Norris, you have a lot of experience, um, you don't have any experience, it doesn't look like, with city government and civil service, but that's fine, however, I'll be honest with you, I'm not in support of you joining the board, but I'm not in support of you joining the board, not because of your experience or lack thereof. It's because I feel like we need to replace the person who's leaving with another minority, so that we can actually keep that balance and make sure that the minority employees are being represented. So, um, this has nothing to do with you as a person, this has to do with what I think, or who I think should be appointed to the board, after this lady who's leaving the board, so I just want you to know that I'm not in favor, but that's why.
Okay, and that's fine, I appreciate you being honest. Uh, but I'll reiterate again, it doesn't matter who the employee is, or what their race is, or what their gender is, whether they're, they're Caucasian, African-American, Hispanic, Native American, I don't care who you are, it's what the problem is and what it takes to make it right. And that's, that's, that's all I handle my business. But, thank you for being honest.
Anybody else? Mr. Broussard, Councilman Broussard, always calling him Mr. Broussard. It is.
I think Mr. Norris brings a lot to the table, right now, immediately. You have a problem, I think you go ahead, a lot of seniority stuff that you know, from your business and all, and people that work, how to handle it, so, um, I'm in support of you, sir, for all the background you've given us. And you'd be an immediate person up there to bring some leadership to the table.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Broussard.
Yes, sir.
Well, I just appreciate it too, we keep saying that, because, uh, Mr. Norris employs over a hundred people, I'm sure they're all different types of people, that's gonna be coming to that board, and we, we vote on different issues with different colors, different races, every day. And I think we lucky to have someone as fair as this gentleman to, to look at that, you know, because he's been here forever. Luckily, he lives in, I'm glad he lives in my district, and he brings so much, look, he mentioned it, but I was gonna mention it, what he did in West End.
Well, and I, I know all about it.
A lot. I mean, you, you can't say enough about him being a community person. And, um, and it's all about Iberia Parish, or mostly New Iberia, it's not, never been about race, never will be about race. It's about the kids, and, you know, he's one of the most given people I know in this, in this city. It's just what it is, so, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to have him, I'm, I'm just surprised that he has enough time and his wife lets him. The problem is be the only.
She might not want me home.
Yeah, that's the thing, but I appreciate Pat for you doing that, and I think the citizens, and I think the people work for the city will see, uh, uh, that someone like you, with your experience, will be a benefit to them. It might take a little while, but I think sometimes change is good, and I think it's time, because right now, we, we need help and these people, I, I think are not, are not getting, we're not getting the most we can out some of these employees, and I think they want more. But we need to find a way where we can give them more, but we need to get more from them. And I think the opportunity is there, we gotta just start working for it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I want, first of all, I wanna commend you, 'cause I knew Ms. Willie Mae Jefferson, I always, I always heard her name, she been on that board, what, twenty years?
Yeah, yeah, gave her a plaque.
And you, 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 I thought, I thought it commendable that you kept renewing her term.
She was great.
And she, she retired, and, and, and she served, and, I mean, listening to Mr. Pat's qualifications in business, I mean, he, he has great business acumen, I believe that the civil service board is a professional board. There's boards that are not professional, and I think he will bring that professionalism to the board and more or less, be able to get to the employees, to get them motivated to work, because it's all about trying to get those employer salaries. Uh, and, and I'm gonna say on a personal level, everybody now in a barber shop, and because I know Jonathan, me and Jonathan finished leadership together, and we became friends, and, uh, you know when you know somebody, but you don't know them, you don't go eat with them and stuff, you wanna know them more? So, people come to the shop and they say, I say, "What you working at now?", or sometime they have the shirt, and I say, "They say I work at Norris", and I always say, I say, "How are those guys over there?", and I never heard not one thing. Good, good things from y'all, you know, the guys that I know, that's not saying nobody, everybody that I've asked, how do y'all, you know, employers? And everybody talk good about you and Jonathan, and I think Brad, I wanna work, all of them work.
All of them work out, and, and, man.
I'm, I'm supporting, you know, you, and again, more importantly, man, getting somebody to serve, we, we keep underestimating. Man, it's not easy to get people to serve on these boards, man, uh, I saw one of my classmates from leadership, he put out about all of the boards that people, the vacancies on different boards, it was in the parish though, and I'm like, two vacancies here, two there, you know, sewers boards, levy boards. People don't wanna serve, but thank you for wanting to serve, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you look really good on paper, but also I got several phone calls about you with people saying how you were a good person and the best person for the job. Like, several calls over the last few days, yes, uh, so apparently the word got out that you were applying for this. But, um, I don't know you on a personal level, just kinda in passing, we've seen each other at different events, you're always involved, and we appreciate you even stepping up for this. So, you have my support as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
When I first looked at this, um, I was in the mindset of, um, my fellow councilwoman Reed. Um, I know Ms. Willie Mae Jefferson personally, and I knew what kinda person she was and is, you know, and, um, I just didn't see you filling in her spot. You know, everything was just, it was like, oh, okay. Uh, so I was in the mindset that we should have somebody who fit her more, you know, because she brought a lot to the table, but then after listening to you, you changed my mind about that, you know, I think from what you have sa- said, now showing is something different. You, people say a whole lot of things, but, you know, you have to, you know, act upon those words. And I'm looking forward to, 'cause I'm gonna support you tonight, even though I wasn't at the beginning. You changed me, uh, you know, with, with the speech, really, and it, and it seemed to be from your heart. And that's what moved me, so, tonight you'll have my support, now, what's the process to get somebody off we don't want anymore? I just wanna know that process too.
What's the process to get somebody off you don't want them?
You check and then you put.
Oh, yeah, you hedging your bet.
Since you told us the process to, um, get them on.
Well, while just looking that up. I'll put your name up, I, I know the work you do, and I appreciate that you would take the time to do this, and, uh, you know, I'm expressing to you, as I have before, my goal is to see how we can get our employees more money, uh, you know, change what we have to change to make it good for everybody, 'cause, 'cause the thing to make, to make this place run, okay, more efficiently, more effectively, and to build, you know, we have, we have over two hundred employees, um, to make it worthwhile for everybody and fair for everybody, I do see that, you know, changes need to be made. We need to try to keep up, uh, it is always hard for government to keep up with the private sector, uh, but I think that we can make some efforts and, and what you bring to the table is that experience. So, thank you for that now, now we hear how to get rid of somebody.
Vote for him before we get rid of him?
Y- yeah, really.
He's talking about him, I'm talking about anybody.
In, in general.
I s- I suggest we get, you mean, from that board?
Yes, from the board.
I'll read it after we, let's vote first.
So, there's no other questions or comments, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you very much, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
And now, now let's get the answer, I need, gotta be curious.
Yeah, the statute says, "Any member of a board, of the board shall be liable to removal from office by judgment of the District Court, for high crimes and misdemeanors in office, incompetence, corruption, favoritism, extortion, or oppression in office, or for gross con- misconduct or habitual drunkenness."
Okay.
That's nineteen sixty-six.
Yeah, 'cause I'm like, how do you even prove half of that stuff they just said?
Okay, "The District Attorney shall institute such suit and shall do so upon a written request specifying the charges, by twenty-five citizens and taxpayers of the new musi- municipality. The District Attorney is directed to associate in the diligent prosecution of such suit, any attorneys selected and employed by the said citizens and taxpayers." So, you need an angry mob?
Yep.
And serious complaints.
But, what about other board members, that's, that's not included?
I mean, the state put this together in nineteen sixty-six.
This is just this board.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, okay, so, we got a lot of changes.
We need to revisit it before we get, you know, before this, before I get off, we need to revisit it.
Well, we need to do it.
Antiquated stuff on there, so, but it's good, though.
Just take all twenty-five drinking, you'll be all right, no.
I mean, that's what it says, folks.
Public drunkenness.
So, congratulations, Mr. Norris.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
But behave yourself.
No drunkenness.
We are changing that statute.
All right, thank y'all very much, this was a good discussion, as always, there's nothing that comes here that's not good.
And look, I, I enjoy dealing with Ms. Jefferson, and she was sharp.
She was sharp.
And she didn't, she didn't really run a business on her own, but she understood a system.
She did.
And she understood fairness and how the rules need to be applied.
She ran her school.
No, when, when she sat up here, she was.
Yeah, she managed people, though.
She did, she did, first meeting I went to was right when I got elected and she schooled me on something, and I was like, oh, I like this lady.
And, and when you talk to the board, she was the one to talk to.
All right, thank y'all as always, moving on, uh, four C.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-four, a resolution approving change order number five administrative for the city of New Iberia Concrete Repair Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
It's a deduct of eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, so we won't have a whole lot of debate about it, uh, do I have a motion?
We'll move.
Mo- motion by Councilman Dan Doyle, and a second by Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo, again, it's a deduct, uh, any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, and if there's none, please vote your machines. Yeah, we're gonna get those two up. Okay, but lightning's gonna strike twice, let's see, uh, oh, and a couple of items, uh, four D.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-five, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion, for the city of New Iberia Concrete Repair Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson-Reed, and a second to Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, um.
It was Brooke.
Oh, it's Brooke, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Brooke Markat.
Yeah, the deep voice, Brooke.
Yeah, she got a cold, I'm sorry, I was, I was reading and I'll do better. Yes, sir, you wanna tell us about it, we should be in good shape.
So, this is the, uh, concrete project, uh, it's complete, you have the punch list, doesn't get any easier than this.
That's awesome.
So, uh, it's all finished, and that, but change order you just approved is the final change order for the project, so.
Good.
Everything balances out, so, this one's done, it's taken a far minute.
Good, questions, comments?
So, they're gonna get the last little bit of money?
Forty-five, once you approve it, they file it. Their forty-five day clear lien prob- period goes into effect, forty-five days, they go get the certificates in, there's no liens on the job, and, and make them final payment.
Okay.
And then it's completely closed.
Yep. Yep.
I have a question, but it's not necessarily about this particular thing, but it's dealing with concrete.
Okay.
And I wanted to ask him.
I'm here.
Are they, you know, some people work, uh, I don't know work, what work crew did some, and they, they put those big holes in the middle of the streets? So, who's responsible for?
We deal, we dealing with some right now, the different utility companies have been in the city, that is something that our ordinance committee's working on, that we really need to tighten up, uh, not a committee, it's just a group of people, but.
They're supposed to give us notice, it's already in there.
It's already in there.
It's already in there, but we're gonna have to step up the fines, we're gonna have to do something, because we had one that, uh, I responded to this week, that, uh, was right in the middle of the road and it's not good.
Well, on Bank Street, it's just, uh, shells or something in there.
Right, right.
And I don't know if they filled the one on Fontaine.
One of them on Bank is us, 'cause we were waiting on something, uh.
Yeah, the contractor was gonna wait till they get all their patches to come back and, or do all the repairs and come back and do the patches. We're trying to get them to do it in two.
Yeah, we're trying to get them to come down.
I think the other one is on Byyard, maybe.
There's one somewhere else.
Yeah, where was the one we talked?
Byyard or Fontaine.
Yeah, we have one on Jane Street that they patched and did a really, a really bad job.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Are they gonna fix the one on Jane Street, because it's a ridiculous hump now?
Yes, it is.
Responded to it, uh, today, yesterday, and my response was.
I'm, I'm never ha- I'm never happy when I see a patch in a brand new road.
No, man, it's ridiculous.
Well, whenever I saw him digging it up, I was like, you gotta be kidding me.
I know it's not the city, but I always send Freddie and Joe an email like, come on, man.
And I mean, they didn't saw cut it, they did a very bad job, uh, believe me, I'm not happy about it, we are hunting them down now.
We do have a lot of utility work going on in that particular area, with the state project and everything else.
I'm telling.
Just make them fix it right, they were the road last.
Yep.
Yeah, they just patched it all wrong.
I know, I know, so, I'm not happy, believe me. Other questions or comments, then, uh, please vote your machines, we can close this one out, thank you very much. All right, four E.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-six, a resolution approving change order number one administrative for the city of New Iberia Asphalt Street, Crack Routing Filling and Ceiling Project and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Any and All Documentation in Connection Therewith.
Lightning struck twice, this is another deduct change order, and this one's nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. So, another big thank you, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markat, is there any discussion on this deduct?
Thank you once again.
Yes, ma'am. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Appreciate it very much, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, four F.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-seven, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the city of New Iberia, Asphalt Streets Crack Routing Filling and Ceiling Project and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Any and All Documentation in Connection Therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markat, is there any discussion on this substantial completion?
So, John, is there a punch list of this one, or is everything's complete?
All finished.
Okay, good.
It was just, they were just routing and sealing cracks, and I mean, they did that all in one swoop.
Okay.
Took them three days to do everything, which was pretty quick.
Good.
Yes, it did.
That machine was really neat, though, I mean, it was like, chase it to the, I'm very fine.
Yeah. Anybody else, then, uh, please vote your machines, thank you very much, four G.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-eight, a resolution awarding contract to Dixie Electric Incorporated for the city Park Trail Lighting Upgrades Project, and authorize the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
It's thirty-one thousand, that was some of the money that we gave each district, uh, we needed a few thousand dollars more. I took it out of park maintenance, because they can have all new, brand-new lights and, and new heads, which would be much better lighting, and they're not gonna need the money for the maintenance they would've had to have done. So, do I have a motion?
Move, second.
Motion, Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo, and a second by Councilman Dan Doyle, any discussion?
So, ma'am, every light is gonna be changed to LEDs?
Yes, all those heads for all those existing lights on the walking trail will take down, and they'll, all the light inside of it will be replaced.
So, are, are they doing it different, so it would have a better lighting?
It'll have better lighting and less maintenance, so we get a, a kind of a double.
So, they don't think we'll have to add no lighting?
Well, we're gonna do this first, and that was all the money you had, plus a few thousand dollars, so I'm not saying we wouldn't wanna add some, but we'll have to figure that out.
I went through and evaluated the entire park's lighting, daytime, nighttime, and I'd say probably like, ninety percent of the lights are actually utility lighting.
Yeah.
Utility service lighting, and I noted every light that was out or malfunctioning, uh, but the trail lighting, this will be a higher illumination, than what's there now, so, and LED, which is low maintenance.
So, this has nothing to do with the utility lighting?
No, this is all our walking trail lighting.
But we could maybe at one point get them to update those lighting?
Well, we've asked them to, and we've turned in all the ones that were broken, and we are working on that as we speed, so, the combination of two.
Early in the morning, Jesus.
We have a contract that they're supposed to replace them all.
Overgrowth, tree overgrowth is causing a lot of shadowing, uh, unnoticed.
Yeah, we thinking about getting Public Works to go in and do some trimming as well, but I thought I'd get the new lights, we'd really see what we had, and then I talked to Joe already, and we're gonna figure a way to, you know.
I appreciate it, 'cause like, safety, you know, and then.
And actually, I wanna check all the parks, because I kinda think that we getting a lot of overgrown areas that the lighting is being blocked by tree limbs.
So, since you brought the utility lighting, um, have they started on the two-hundred for this year, the replacements?
They have started, I don't know where they're at, I am having a meeting with them very shortly, to go over, you know, the patrols, to go over the lighting and kinda see where we are. We're about finished and ready to sign, where we can put, the first twenty-five crime cameras have gone up.
Yes, I was.
They're in the process, okay, the rest of them, I need to get that signed, will be on clicker poles.
Right.
So, I'm working through that as fast as I can, but at the same time saying, okay, let's get this out the way, and then let's start meeting on, you know, the other stuff.
Because they are not replacing those, uh. Because they are not replacing those, uh, yeah, and when they go out, they're not replacing them with the LED. They're just putting up the mercury vapor or whatever that was there, so I know that for a fact.
And the contract says it has to be LED.
Yes.
Yep, well, like I said, I already talked to them and said, let's try to handle, I like to handle everything at once, so let me get my new paper signed, at the same time, we'll start looking at all of that.
We work hard on that.
We did. No, we did, we did. And those cameras are one, I mean, you know, I've seen the first twenty-three of them in action and let me tell you, it's gonna be a game changer. That, and thank y'all for that, but that was money well, gonna be money well spent. What I see that twenty-five of them are showing is twenty-four of them, when we have a hundred and something, it, it, it's, it's gonna really be a game changer. Anymore?
Yes, we're talking lights. When, where, where are we at on the, uh, lamps that, cause I'm getting that, I get this question so much about the lamps that were on Hocken Street that we removed?
Right.
And that we're gonna put along the walking trail?
Yes.
In the west end, where are we at with that?
That.
And are those gonna be LED?
Well, since almost.
I got that question last.
Since almost none of them worked, okay? It's gonna be new budget because we didn't have the money in the budget to do that. We got the poor base, we're gonna have to run wire, so while we add it, I say we make them LED too. So, and now I kinda know I can backfigure what it'll cost per pole to make them LED from this bit. So I was waiting on this and then that will go in new budget so that we can get that done, but we're gonna have to pour, you know, run wire where we don't have it, we're gonna have to pour concrete bases, and then now I know what it's gonna cost per fixture to make them LED. Um, so that will come in the new budget. The first step was just to get those poles because I didn't want the state to take them somewhere else.
So we're gonna, we're gonna use the same poles, right?
Yeah, the same fixture, we're just gonna change the head, the fixture inside, inside the head, we're just gonna make them LED.
And so when you say the concrete base, you're gonna, uh, build something like what's on Main Street, cause remember what they had on Hocken Street was substandard.
It, it was.
You could shake it, they had.
Right, it was.
They had sand in there.
It was standard for those kinda lights, but those kinda lights weren't used in the right application. In other words, there are places that you don't put footings. I don't think it's on, on a, on a state highway.
Exactly.
They did it a very different way.
Then complain about saying the people were messing with, they don't have a base and they just push on them and they move.
No, we're gonna pour, but knowing that, because, you know, that's been an issue, we're gonna pour a concrete base in both of them so that they are, you can't do that to them anymore.
Good, okay.
But they didn't really do it the wrong way and, and what it was, it's, it's, it's a safety issue, so when the state does something on the highway, I don't find they do that all the time, though, but, you know, I'm not a state engineer, they worry about if a car hits it. So they did something there thinking way back when, cause I looked that up to say, why, why did they not have a base? You know how you do like a sheer sign that if it gets hit?
They wanted to break.
It breaks, okay, so they put them saying it's a state highway, like it would be some high, uh, you know, miles per hour highway that if they got hit, they would break off as a liability thing. But in that application, cars only going twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, it didn't make a lot of sense to me, but where we're gonna use them, we're gonna, we're gonna figure a way to anchor.
Okay, good, cause again, that made no sense. I've seen them in Shreveport and other places on, along the state highway with a base, so they gave us substandard stuff.
But I was glad I could get them back.
It was, yeah.
Anything else on this? Then please vote your machines. See, I know I'm a scrounger, I'll pick up anything I can. If we can reuse it. Four H.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-nine, a resolution approving change order number one for the Bayou Tesh Museum project phase three, FPNC project number fifty dash ML one dash seventeen dash O two and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is some hidden damage that they uncovered, it's like sixty-five hundred bucks, I think?
Yes.
Okay, um, let me get a motion and then you can tell us about it. Do I have a motion? Um, Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsal and Councilman David Russo, will you tell us about it?
Yeah, so, uh, a few weeks back, um, as they've been uncovering and demolishing parts of the second floor of the historic part of the building, uh, we, uh, it was revealed that there was substantial damage under the, uh, walls themselves where termite and moisture had, uh, kinda ruined some of the flooring and subflooring, so we, as part of the refurbishment of the building, that's one of the aspects of the project is to refurbish these floors, uh, but these were unforeseen conditions, so the contractor's asking for additional payment. Now, this is some, uh, work that is, what they're gonna do is time and materials, so they're gonna track how much time and if there's any money, uh, that's left over, we'll put it somewhere else in the project, so, um, it's kinda the best way to handle it, being as unforeseen. So at the end of the day, we'll have a good refurbished floor and we'll correct these issues.
So you're basically saying that sixty-five hundred is the max we should pay for this?
It's, it's, that's the maximum that there, uh, unless there's more substantial damage that, as they get into it, but that was there, uh, you know, not to exceed the this portion of it. So they, they kinda mapped out the areas they thought, um, and then again, like it's, it's a flooring under a flooring, so it, you know, we don't know.
Yeah.
And we're hoping it's not, and we're hoping it's not structural issues either, but, uh, until they start pulling it out, they'll know.
Okay.
But I just sort of wanna remind y'all, this project was about twenty-nine thousand dollars under budget.
Right.
So this is coming out of that surplus and remaining balance.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council for? Here or none, vote your machines. That motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Resolution number twenty-four dash fifteen.
You missed it. We voted, it failed.
A resolution creating the administrative process for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Business Development Grants.
Cool, this is one that I took information that I got from council members and from the discussions that we had, and so this is a start to discuss it some more. And hopefully pass a resolution because, you know, we wanna move on it.
So you, do you need a motion?
Yeah, well, we'll, let's do our motion second, then we'll have our discussion, so, yes, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Okay, now open for discussion.
So.
Here or none? Yes, ma'am. It was a joke.
You're so funny. And you know that won't bother me one bit. Um, okay, so under what type of businesses are eligible? Again, I don't know why we're trying to say it has to be a brick and mortar facility because in this day and age, there are internet businesses all over the place. To me, that's unfair to penalize people who don't have a brick and mortar location, that they can't, they can't receive this, that's not fair. In my opinion.
Yes, ma'am, no, no, that's, uh, in other words, I put down what the consensus was at the time and what people sent me. And that's why we do what we do, now, now we get to do what we normally do, which is talk about it.
That's one thing.
Okay.
The second thing is, why are we saying that the business has to be in operation before March of twenty twenty?
Well, we, Laney and I discussed that one as well and we felt that that's when I got the mon, I got the money cause of COVID. So I got the money cause of COVID, so we thought we should do something that said, okay, they were there when that was going on. If we don't wanna do that, we don't have to, but that's, that was our thinking, cause we kicked it around trying to say, should they be having business in a year? Should they have been in business four or five years? And then we were trying to figure out, like, we didn't wanna give somebody something that they, I don't want anybody to fail at all, but, but we didn't wanna give somebody something that, okay, we handed them this money, cause this is a one time, we'll never have this opportunity as a community or as a government to give money, okay? That's never gonna happen again. So we were thinking, okay, we wanna give this money to make sure that they succeed and that they are succeeding. And that they're gonna further their business or they're gonna grow or that our investment, cause we only get to do this at a weird time, would live on kinda. And then we started about time, should it be a year, should it be this? And we just decided that, well, maybe, you know, and, and all this is up for discussion, maybe we should say, we got the money cause of COVID, so it had to be in business from then. Cause you were impacted.
Well.
Just a way to look at it.
Yeah. To me, we're going to eliminate a lot of people, that we're gonna, you know, pass over a lot of people because they will not have been in business for four years or four and a half years. And I thought we were trying to help struggling businesses, people who really have entrepreneurial spirit, who've been, you know, working on their business for a year and that they have been making strides, but this could help them to take it to the next level or to grow the business. So I hope that we change that, that we don't go back to March of twenty twenty or whatever that says. Uh, to me, that's too long, that's, that's gonna keep us from helping people who could really use the help. Just my opinion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I, the way I'm looking at it, you know, we have certain money that we got from the government that can only be spent for certain purposes. So we have the strings that come with the money. Then we also have the limitations that we have as a public body dealing with public money and how we have to deal with public money. So I think we also need to follow those rules and we can use public money to do public things. You know, ordinary things that we do every day that are public functions. We can contract with people who are gonna do things for us in exchange for us paying them and that they do those public functions. We can spend money for things like the demolition grants where we're demolishing unsafe structures because that's a public function. But if it's not a public function and we're giving money to private people, then I think we have some limitations. And I think one of those is in the state constitution where it says we can't make donations to people except that we can have programs for the aid of the needy. Now, uh, I think if you have programs for the aid of the needy, and we try not to get into this too much because it's, it's, you know, endless, but I think we have to identify people who need this money.
Right.
Agreed.
And, and I don't think it's for, I don't think it's for everybody, um, because I don't think we can give money to everybody. I think we, if we have a program to aid the needy, now the needy could be a person who's got financial problems. The needy could be a person whose handicap needs a ramp, you know, um, things like that. But I think it's got to be to respond to need under rules that we make ahead of time so that we're not making the rules after the game has started. Um, so I think we need to have some criteria that's gotta be tied to income, disability, medical condition, something. And I, I think, I think aid the needy is, that's kinda the magic words as far as I'm looking at, at, at our limitations. Um, now, if, if we're gonna get, you know, if we're gonna pay somebody to do something that we have the right to do, so on and so forth, but I don't, I don't think that's what that is. But to, um, you know, to, to just give grants to small businesses because we want small businesses to succeed, I don't think we can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
And we can only do twenty-one, just, just remember, if we do seven thousand dollars apiece, cause we have to buy everything, we have to do everything to make sure that it's spent by the federal requirements. So if we stick with the seven thousand, it's kinda what we kicked around, then we can do twenty-one. So we are gonna have a, a, it's a baited feel out there, we might have a hundred people who have need. We're only gonna be able to do twenty-one. So we just need to consider that as we make our rules and decide how we're gonna do this. We, we, we already know that we're going out on a limb doing this at all because city government's never done it. That doesn't mean you don't do it, okay? Don't, don't take me wrong, I think it's, it's a challenge, but I think it's fun. I think that we, you wanna do new things in your commu, new money should do new things, I say that all the time. So we gotta follow all the rules and we're going out on a limb doing this because it is more of a, it's, it's different for city government to be doing this at all. On the flip side, I think it's really cool, but just keep in mind as we make the rules, whatever they end up, okay? We can, only gonna be able to do twenty-one.
So, so Jeff.
Yes, sir.
So Jeff, you said needy, that's a broad term. You said income, that's one of your statements for needy, that's also a broad, broad term. So somebody affected by COVID, say, lack of revenue generated during COVID, could classify as a needy. Am I wrong or am I right? I'm just asking. Or are you gonna say needy as, uh, somebody that's in need from a depressed level, you know?
What, what the constitution says is, quote, "programs of social welfare for the aid and support of the needy." There are a lot of people who are hurt by COVID who are doing just fine. And I don't think we can give that to them. And there's some people who were hurt by COVID who are not doing just fine, I think we can help with that. I think we have to have some reasonable rules. Uh, you know, this is, this is not something that you generally see done, you know, so we're kinda, we're kinda working from a, a blank slate here. But I do think we need to have, we need to be able to justify what we're doing as programs for the aid of, of the needy. Now, um, impacted businesses, yes, I think handicap ramps, you know, medical conditions, um, you know, those things, I, I think, I think that's needy.
Then, then how do you go to a business and ask them in the qualify without requesting a tax return for that dotted business to see where they at and drafting some type of inflation, I mean, uh, cost percentage wise to rate them as a needy business or not needy business? Because there's no other factors right out there other than your conversation with that business or your view of how that business is doing. Then you start to look at, you gotta look at financial records to determine if they, they need it. I'm asking, how do, what is our determining factors?
Well, that's what we need to come up with, but I do think you need to ask some questions. And, you know, I don't think, I think if a business is not willing to talk about that, they can't apply for the grant.
Okay.
And I mean, if, if you don't wanna share a tax return, you don't wanna share any kinda income information or you don't, or you don't wanna share your occupational license returns, you know, then, then don't apply. But I think, I think we have to identify some kinda need, and it doesn't have to be all financial need. But I don't think this is, I don't think this is, this is not necessarily for bright young people with startups.
Right.
You know, unless they're neat.
So didn't we also say we were gonna look at census tracts that show where the needy people are in the city of New Iberia? We said that that was gonna be part of what we look at.
And it could.
Yeah.
You know, cause we're looking at the.
Right.
The, from the original money, we look at, I, I can't read it right here, but. No, I mean, you know, it may be all up in Laney's grill, uh, thank you, Laney. Small business operating in qualified census tract, small business operating by tribal governments on tribal land, small business operating in US territories. You know, there's a whole lot of definitions inside of the ARPA stuff.
Right.
That does say, you know.
Because it's really about marginal, that they were really trying to help communities that were marginalized and communities that were affected by COVID.
Yeah, originally, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what, when we wrote this, that's what we had.
However.
That huge document, that's what we followed when we wrote this and said, okay, these are some of the things that we could do with the money.
Right. The thing is, though, is that when we, when we were talking about doing this, we were targeting, um, and I know we kinda, some, somehow we put in there the west end, but we really were targeting, um, minority businesses that were in the census tracts that were considered also part of the opportunity zones. That's why, and it was one of the reasons why we were like trying to say, maybe we put together a program and the people who wanna apply for this grant, they go through this program and at the end, if they completed the program, then they get the grant because they learned something along the way to help them to grow their business. It's not just, oh, I got a business and, but you know, you, 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 you get some people in here, you teach them about insurance, you teach them about work, workman's comp, you teach them about, you know, um, accounting, you know, QuickBooks, whatever that is. Four or five classes that they have to attend and then at the end, if you've passed, you know, you're going through all of that, then you get that grant money. But you're targeting the people who need, who don't have access to that today. They don't have access to maybe these classes and stuff like that, so that's a way to help a business grow because you're forcing them to learn something to get the money.
Skip. It's, it's, that's, that seems like it's leaning back towards what we did at the, um, with UL coming down and.
Very similar to that.
And, 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 uh, you remember, when you ever came and gave the classes and it seems like where we're going back to, uh, I, I see.
I just feel as a.
And that came out of the same pot of money, the same.
It did.
Okay.
Partnered with UL and, uh, Jeffrey Stewart came, who runs the Light Center, and we had a bunch of small businesses come and it was good, it was productive. And I went to some of the sessions.
Yeah, I did too.
And now we're trying to say, let's do it a little different, let's identify businesses that could use the money. Instead of spending the money with UL to teach them how to be business, better business people?
Are you asking me a question?
I'm asking everybody.
No, so I was just, I guess, maybe it's the teacher in me, I don't know, but I feel like you need to, they need to go through something to get the money. Something that is gonna help them to be better business people. And I feel like that, to me, at the end, giving them a grant to say, hey, listen, you stayed here, you learned something, here's some money to kinda get you to the next level, to grow your business.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that, wouldn't that technical assistance cost money as well, which would cut into the seven thousand?
As the guy who's got.
Yeah.
Who has to.
It could potentially cost some money.
Right, you would have to spend money, they wouldn't get seven, twenty-one business, small businesses who are deserving of this wouldn't get seven thousand dollars.
But let's say you give them five.
We didn't settle on seven anyway, we had talked about six, cause it, it, it went evenly into one-fifty, it was twenty-five people. And then five thousand was thirty people, so we, it went evenly into, cause twenty-one. And then five thousand was thirty people, so we, it went evenly into, 'cause twenty-one is one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars.
We, we had a little money left.
Right.
Less.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I keep hearing business development.
How do you reach out to these people?
Right.
You know, do you go to the bank and say, do you have some people you feel that they need some help? Or you, they come to the council to you, do we advertise, how do you even reach out?
So you, you definitely, you advertise and as a council member, I know the businesses in my community, I know the minority businesses that's, in that, in my track. And I would go out and reach out to them and say, here, here's what the city's gonna do, here's what your commitment is, this can help you grow your business.
Well, once we, once we establish, and, and this one doesn't have to be done tonight, okay?
Right.
We have one later that's a discussion item, which is where we would send kids to SLCC to pay for their first year. We need to move on that one pretty quickly because schools, you know, done. Uh, this one, we have a little more time, I don't want you to think we have to make a final decision here tonight. But we have the criteria, so if we start,
Can we add to that criteria?
Yes, if we start with the criteria.
And add in nonprofits, 'cause I think they actually touch needy people.
But that's not a business.
But that's not a business.
Lots of times they are, lots of times they are, um, in the state as a business.
Right, but if we drill down, we have to pick something to move forward. If we drill down on the, on what we're willing to do on the criteria, it's gonna help us determine what our, who our target businesses are. Or whatever group, okay? So however we wanna do it, I mean, we can talk about theories all night, but if we can figure out a way to drill down and say, okay, this is what, this is who we think we want to, as a council, we want to touch, we want to help, we want to affect. And get that out of the way, then we can work on who, who fits that bill. But until we determine who we, who, who our target is, we're gonna, we're gonna go around and around and around. Which is fun, I mean, you know.
Let me, let me ask something, we, we keep saying COVID, but if my memory serves me correct, and it don't always serve me correct, I think this money, it didn't, it didn't just come from COVID, it, it also came from the death of George Floyd and from the, um, some of the killings of unarmed African Americans and the disenfranchisement of African Americans with the country. Now y'all can go back and Google it and research, I'm not telling you what I, what I heard, I'm telling you what I read and watched on the news. This, this wasn't just COVID, this was almost, it, it was a cry to help me.
Well, I think a lot of things happen at the same time.
Exactly.
Because the money, when I look at the title of what, what I'm supposed to do, it says Corona State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. So the title is it came from Corona. I'm not saying that all kind of other things didn't happen around our country at the same time, but the money that I got,
But they passed a big bill, a big financial bill.
Well, that might have been a catalyst to pass it, but I followed the rules in that big old document that I read twice myself. And, uh, Erin was our clerk at the time, she read the whole thing more than once, and then we sat down and started putting it together. So of this money that we put together, I'm not saying what was the catalyst, I'm not saying what didn't happen in, in, at the same time. But I just went by that document of, you know, that it came from Corona.
But, and I think Councilman Lewis is right in the fact, also to say that, um, based on the fact that African Americans were disproportionately affected by COVID because of the lack of healthcare available in our communities, that all was part of this, this desire to bring the ARPA bill forward, so.
Well, it says, I mean, we just read it a second ago, it says in that bill that it's for disproportionately impacted area, uh, low census tracts.
Right.
Right? I mean, so it, it, I'm not saying you're right or wrong, but I'm going by the document, the document says that we're supposed to spend this money in low census tracts.
Right.
And we could have done one of two things at the time, okay, and we voted on this a long time ago. We could have spent the money on sewer, broadband, and water. Oh, we got sewer needs, okay? And we are working on that, but we decided as a council then, uh, you know, a few years back, that we didn't need broadband because we didn't have that as private, we didn't need water because it's loco, we don't have a water system. And we decided a long time ago that some of our money, 'cause there was also that tourism piece in there, that there was the piece that promoted business, there was a piece, piece that promoted education, we picked from all the categories we could pick. Some communities just said, give it to broadband, give it to, or they had their own water systems.
Right.
So they spent the money there, but we made a conscious choice to spend the money in a whole bunch of different ways. Some of it promotes tourism, some of it went, you know, we can go find the book, but I mean, we spent it all over. We spent it in our parks, we spent it on quality of life, they had a whole piece on, uh, because it was Corona that it was an illness. They had a whole piece on where we could spend it in the parks that people were exercising, people were getting out. So we spent, we fixed a lot of our problems with this money. We fixed a lot, and we might have done improvements in parks, but it was all things that were falling apart. It was all things that we touched that, you know, there's nothing that we spent the money on that we didn't use. This is a real way to handle some issue we were gonna have to pay for anyway. And we did that with a lot of it.
We did.
Anyway.
But we also decided that when we were talking about these business grants, we talked about targeting minority businesses to try and help them to grow their businesses. If you guys think back when we started talking about this, that's what we were trying to, that was part of the issue we were trying to fix, is to help them.
And we talked about targeting low census tracts.
Right.
That's what we,
'Cause those low census tracts are also the opportunity zones in New Iberia.
Most of them are, yes, yeah, although no one's figured out how to use the opportunity zone credit yet, I don't know what to do with those. I would like to figure that out, 'cause I mean, I think other communities have utilized them, but we, we haven't.
And we definitely can use that as,
And I've been trying to find somebody to help me figure that one out, but it, it, it hadn't worked yet, just to say.
Each city council person gonna get a certain amount?
I would like to spread every one of these things as we do, you know, for everybody. So, yeah, we're gonna try. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody's gonna have, like, like if you do twenty-one, you know, we divide that up, that doesn't mean that everybody's gonna, gonna have one, you know? But I think the opportunity for everybody to pick and to be part of this, we need to start off with all of these. Same thing with the scholarships to SLCC, same things with, uh, what's the other one, I'm forgetting about. Same thing with the one block at a time, the big one that is gonna really be the bear, where we're doing houses. We do wanna spread all of those through the whole town, but we gotta find,
Guidelines.
Guidelines first, and we gotta find people that fit the guidelines, or businesses that fit the guidelines. But we should all get a chance. Yes, sir?
I think we need to do some more talking about this.
Well, I do too, that's why I put it on.
And we're not gonna get to the bottom of this tonight.
We're not.
But I think we need to think about how to creatively accomplish what we wanna accomplish while fitting it within the categories that we need to fit it into.
Yes.
So, for example, I'll just throw this out there, if you've got a small business that is in need itself, I think, um, that may be a qualifying situation. If you have a small business that serves an area that is in need, that might be a qualifying situation. So you might have some different ways to look at this, as long as the end result is, this money's been spent to help needy people, whether indirectly or indirectly or whatever. You know, I can think of some small business enterprises who are geared toward helping the needy. And you could make a grant to them because that's what they do and that's what they're gonna do with it. So I think there's some thinking that needs to be done here, but, you know, this council and mayor have been really good over the last, I don't know how many years in figuring out how to take an opportunity out there that requires us to think within a category and justify this or that. Pretty good about taking, you know, taking advantage of these opportunities. So I think this is one that's gonna require a little creativity, but I'm not saying you're tied to census tracts, I'm not saying you're tied to, you know, any particular thing. But I just think we need to be able to justify for auditors or whatever, that this is a social welfare program that helps needy people.
Mayor, ma- make a suggestion.
Sure.
Would it, um, would it make sense for us to put together like a small subcommittee to kind of work on this? And a couple of council members, two or three council members to work on this and try and come back with something? I mean, you guys have come up with a good, like, start, um, because you've taken everybody's thoughts, but maybe we can kind of make sure that, um, some of the things that we think are missing are in there and come back with, um, a proposal to the group. 'Cause otherwise, we're gonna have to spend a whole meeting just talking about the, the criteria for this.
Yeah, no, I, I, I've, I've come to realize that. I mean, one of the two things we can do, 'cause we do do great as a group.
Right.
We do, it takes us a while, but we get there. I mean, this is even something, we could either break into smaller groups, I can only have three at a time, I can't have a quorum.
Well, you can't have a quorum, if it's a committee, then you got public meetings and open minutes and all that, you know, you just, you don't wanna do that.
It's a small group.
So I could do a small group.
Small group.
Or we could have a special meeting that we just do this.
Okay.
Right?
And you might need both.
Yeah, I kinda think we will, because, 'cause I want everybody, you know, I want a small group to work on it, that's fine, but I want everybody's input, I mean, y'all all are,
Get information, exchange.
Yeah, y'all are all part of my show. I mean, you know, y'all are part of the team, we can't, I can't do it without y'all, and y'all can't do it without me, that's why we do so well together. So I think that a small committee's a good idea, that's kind of what we, we did this by, you know, people sending in information. But I do think that maybe, this is making me realize, we need a special meeting because the group dynamics that we got here is what, for seven and a half years, has, has made us tick. Has, has made, you know, I know some of you haven't been the whole time, but you fit right in and we went from one council to another with really no changes in how we operate. So I think the beauty is when we all together kicking it around is where we come up with the best, you know, the best solution. And we realized, we, we fought with this, you know, Lanny and I spent a lot of time on each one of these and realized none of them were finished. But we just said, well, let's bring them, you know, I mean, we gotta, we gotta start. 'Cause we have to commit the money by the end of this year.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think this is, I don't think this can be open to everybody. I don't think we can do that. But I think there's plenty of need out there for us to identify, and we gotta figure out some ways to use this money to address that. I mean, I, I'd be happy to be in the group or whatever, but I just,
Well, I kinda think, I kinda think you have to because, uh, you're the one that's gonna keep us out of trouble.
Well, you know, and I, I'm just trying, yeah, I'm just trying to follow the rules here.
That's, that's what we need. So y'all wanna move on for now, I'm asking, 'cause we're not gonna vote on anything. Wanna move on for now, we do have another discussion later. I don't wanna really table it, what we do, we just, uh, I hate to table something 'cause somebody could bring it back.
You can refer to a group, the group, don't you?
Jeff, just to be right, okay, if I table it, somebody's gotta pick, pick it back up, right? What's another way that I can just set it aside for now that it's not complicated?
Unless you give it a certain meeting, you can say by next month or whatever.
Well, I mean, at this point, we don't have a motion, right?
No, we have anything, we just have a discussion.
No, we had a motion.
Oh, we did, we did.
Open discussion.
Yeah.
Just take the motion back.
So what, what should we do?
Well, I think, well, I think you could vote just to defer the thing.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Just defer it.
That's just not as damaging, as table it is like a big step to bring it back, I don't like,
Well, then you gotta have somebody on the prevailing side.
Yeah, yeah, I don't like that.
Yeah, we just, yeah.
If we don't have to.
Yeah.
'Cause it's not contentious, so, you know, let's just defer it.
So who made the second?
I think I did, I did.
I think I'm motion.
Motion, Brooke with the second.
Oh, okay, so it's me and Brooke, yeah.
Okay, I guess you could just withdraw the second, let it die.
Okay.
Okay, I'll withdraw the second.
Okay, now we just move on and we work on it again. Good, thank y'all, this was a good discussion.
We don't have a plan yet.
No, we don't, we don't. Okay, now we moving on to five eight.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number three to contract for emergency and non-emergency services for the, uh, should I say city, huh? Parish City of Iberia and setting for public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-four.
This is our contract that we do with the Acadian Ambulance. They came in for me to sign, said, oh, everybody else already signed, but we, by our charter, it's gonna be longer than twenty-three months. I said, well, I can't sign it, I gotta bring it to the meeting, but it's not a, it's not, anyway, that's why it's here, so can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Martin Lewis and a second by Councilman Dan Dahl. So this is what every community signs, and I've signed them in the past, but we gotta bring it to the council. It's for Acadian Ambulance, who is,
Now I wait for you to say, any discussion?
Any discussion, and let's go.
Okay, could I start?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, okay, so in reviewing this, um, number one says provider shall be entitled to an automatic annual inflationary increase in base rates at providers in customary, current customary rates within the state of Louisiana. Does that mean that the state of Louisiana gives them some sort of rate that they have to use, or is this based on CPI? I mean, what's this increase based on?
I think it's CPI.
Yeah.
I thought it was CPI.
Because it doesn't say CPI.
Okay.
I don't like signing things unless I know what the rate's based on, it needs to be in writing. My second, uh, let's see, uh, um, and then if you go down the paragraph, same one, number two, uh, two, three, four, the fourth to the last sentence. In addition to the foregoing, provider will be allowed to add and/or modify items that represent newer change in technology, equipment and services in pharmaceuticals to charge reasonable fees for said new items that are added without the need of approval for the parish. Okay, what's reasonable? I mean, these words are so ambiguous that we don't know what we're signing. What's the markup? I mean, what's the percentage that we should expect? I know, this, I know, you guys are probably signing, I just, I mean, I'm uncomfortable signing things where it's not, where I'm not clear on what my budget's gonna look like. And this may be small numbers, I don't know, I'm just asking.
It's on that, in that paragraph.
Yeah, I'm reading it. I mean, I read it before, but I thought, I thought it had the CPI.
And I got another question.
Okay.
This extends an agreement, it amends and extends an agreement that we don't have here. So we probably need to know what we're amending and extending.
Right.
Because most, I mean, I know you have a lot of questions, but you're gonna have more questions when you look at the rest of it.
Right.
That's not here.
Okay.
Can we table this?
No, we can table and defer.
If you can table it or defer it, and I can get the other contract, the rest, the original contract to us for next time.
Okay.
Well, I think you could introduce it tonight.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, I, I do need to move it along, I mean, I don't wanna be that we don't have a contract with the Acadian Ambulance, that, that's, that's not,
Well, I think you introduce it, because the thing that you have here, you just don't have the background of, of all the information behind it, so.
It might answer some of the questions.
Yes, no, I think it will, I think it will.
I think it'll answer a lot of questions. But, um, yeah, 'cause this is, this is, we just got a little bitty part of this thing in front of us. So I think you introduce it tonight and then find out more about it and get the two thousand and fourteen package, whatever it is, I don't know what it was. But I think it's done every few years.
It is, it is. So if everybody's okay with that, we'll just have an introduction and then for the next meet, well, before the next meeting, I'll get the contracts, the original contract to everybody. And then we can see what we do with it next time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Everybody agreeing with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We need to vote.
Then, please vote your machines.
We're voting for introduction.
We're voting for introduction only, it's gotta come back, ordinance is two meetings, so now we'll get you some information and we'll make the rest of our decision.
Okay.
Or not. Or redline it and send it back to them.
Hello.
Bobby.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fifteen, an ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of New Iberia and setting for public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, this item, we are going to take some money and reallocate it for the headworks. We are under the gun of time to get our sewer plant ready to take the sewer that's coming from First Soul. So we've been negotiating with the state to try to take some money from them, from the water sector, and that has not been going as good as we would have liked. So we need to move on the headworks project now because we're not gonna drop the ball and we, our plant will be ready. So what this does is take the million dollars that was for the flow reroute and put it to the headworks. In addition to that, remember we borrowed two-point-five million at low interest money from the state? And you asked me what we're gonna do with it, and I said, I don't know, but I'm gonna need it for sewer and it's cheap money, so let's take it.
Yeah.
So that money, we haven't spent for anything, 'cause it's been sitting there waiting for what's my biggest need. Well, it's the headworks. So we take that two-point-five million, we take the million from ARPA, and then there's an item that I ask you, because the other thing we did, God protects fools, when we turned on the TIF district years ago, because the TIF district had been established when I got here, but it'd never been turned on. We, the people who were with me last time, we erased the line, for some reason they didn't have the sewer plant in the TIF district. So I couldn't have spent any money on it. So I had, you know, we did it through Jason A, 'cause we got rid of that line, and we included the sewer plant in the TIF district. Well, again, didn't know why, but just said, I better hedge my bets, sewer's so expensive. So I'm asking you for a half a million dollars out of the TIF district. So that gives us enough money to bid the project out now, 'cause I never dreamed that the water sector money would have taken, So that gives us enough money to bid the project out now, cause I never dreamed that the water sector money would've taken this long. Um, so that lets us, our engineers are working on it, they're ready to go. That lets me get, because the drum screens, there's these big round drum screens, they take ten months to make. They only take two months to install and by being smart about it, the plans are finished. You let me do this, we bid the project out, the other prep work that needs to happen for the headworks project, that can start. So while the drum screens are being fabricated, it's like running, it is running a construction job. All that work's being done, soon as the drum strings come in, we pop them in, we're ready, First Soul is not coming for a year and a half, we, we'll be, we'll be ready. And it's very important that we don't drop the ball on that. Um, there's other parts and pieces, we still have to negotiate a contract with the parish, working on that. Um, as far as the, um, Dan's not here, but I'm gonna ask my question anyway, uh, cause I, I know his answer. Uh, as far as for the rate study that they're doing, the rate study with the state shows that we should raise our rates. Who in this room wants to raise their sewer user fees? I don't think any of us, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I never do that to y'all, none of us, I, I mean, I think I can speak, hit me in the head if I'm wrong. None of us wanna raise our sewer user fees.
Right.
So, because of that, I'm probably not gonna, unless they buy the latest plan that I gave them, we're probably not gonna take that water sector money. Uh, many communities started spending the five million dollars or whatever they got, four million, three million, and now they're realizing the rate study's coming back and they're saying, because of this sustainability number, you have to raise your rates. Well, I didn't spend any money and we didn't take it yet, because what business person would take money and not know the strings? But you know, some communities were desperate for it or they didn't think they'd have to raise their rates. We have a two percent increase built into our ordinance, so we already do increase them by that two percent. So, I, I don't think any of us want to do that anymore. Um, so with that, I might have to get creative and we might have to find some ways for the flow reroute to do it in phases. So we've already contacted our engineers and saying, okay, if we don't take the five million dollars, we, we won't do it all at once, how can we continue to do it? So they're working on a plan for us and we're looking at money. We'll have a million dollars that we don't use as a match, because we didn't take the five million. That million can go, I'll, I'll bring that to you, and that million can go to flow reroute. And so we'll just keep pecking at it, as we've done with so many other projects. Um, but, but that's kinda what this is about, and I think it's really important that we reallocate this money. Yes, Greg?
Uh, we did talk about too, that the TIF would be, you know, the last, the last money we would use if there was any extra.
Correct, correct. We're asking you to move, once we get to it, we're asking you to move five, five hundred thousand from the TIF. But if the, and I don't wanna give all, you, you're right, we're thinking that the flow reroute could be cheaper. And so when and if it is cheaper, we'll just put the money right back, whatever we have left, right back in the TIF. While you were going, Dan, I was saying, I don't think anybody sitting up here wants to raise sewer user fees.
I'm the one who's, we, we implemented it.
And that was enough?
We had to.
No, you did, no, no.
You don't want seconds, dude.
Uh, no, 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 no.
No, okay, but yeah, you don't want seconds. Okay, good. So anyway, that's, that's why we're doing this. So what I'm asking you to do in this step is to amend the ARPA money from, uh, flow reroute to headworks. Any questions or comments?
But, man, there's a situation coming up that maybe we'll go get that money back. Um, you said, the money from the TIF and this money right here, we just taking it's temporary?
We don't know that yet. In other words, we're taking it and then we're gonna bid the project. We have two point five from the low interest loan, we have this million dollars from ARPA, and we're taking a half million from the TIF. Well, you know, our budget is three six. You know, I'm hedging my bet, just to make sure, because you don't bid something that you can't afford to do. But if we have money left, and I'm hoping we do, I'm gonna stick it right back in the TIF.
In the TIF first?
Yeah, the TIF would go back first. The ARPA money won't, and the low interest loan, I'm pretty sure we're gonna need both of those to do the project.
Okay.
So the TIF money would go back.
The TIF money would go back, okay.
That's three point six just for the headworks, not the flow reroute.
Correct, correct.
Just for the headworks.
Yeah, yes, which is our immediate need. I waited and I waited for months and we've been negotiating and going back and forth on the rate study, but it's just taking too long. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get to where we're really down to the wire.
And, and if it comes on the budget and we can return the five hundred to the TIF, we can also use that for the flow reroutes, we choose to do so, right?
No, sir, cause it's not in the TIF district.
Oh, that's right, I thought it was right by the plan.
No, it's not, so the money can only be used in the TIF district, so.
I thought it was by the plan, yeah.
Yeah, no, I can't do that. I wish I could.
Yeah.
But, that money, and you remember our TIF money, I mean, we do a lot of things with that. It's incentivizing new businesses, it's helping us grow.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we put it back in there.
I would like to too, cause, cause I, we have a small TIF district, you know, the parish is blessed to have one that goes all the ninety. I was just really small. I was where theirs brings in two hundred and fifty thousand a month, I always brings in twenty-five thousand, okay? So we, we are, we are definitely, you know, the little brother when it comes to TIFs. Questions or comments? And I asked you, I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Representative Ricky Goslin and Councilman Marlon Lewis. No discussion, or we've already had it, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. And the Yapani. All right, five C.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen and ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to civilians and other law enforcement agencies at a cost not less than fair market value in accordance with state law and setting for public hearing on June fourth, twenty twenty-four.
This is back for the second time, because the market has changed on us. When we first sold cars, nobody had cars. We had the hottest commodity around. They were fighting to get our used police cars. That's not the case. Also, these are the fusions which the narcotics and detectives people have used, they're not nearly as desirable. So, I got stuck last time, because we put a dollar amount, okay? I'm gonna try to get the most money I can get for them, but no one offered what we had approved. So I'm just asking you to say, let me just go to fair market value, I need to get those off the lot, you know, we had a tree fall, that damaged two of them. These things need to go. So what I'm asking is, we will continue to search, research it and get fair market price for them, I'm gonna get as much as I can, but that's why they're back again. So move.
And a civilian can purchase them?
No, not really. Well, it goes to an auction. Well, yeah, it goes to, at an auction they can.
Oh, okay.
At an auction, they can't come here.
The thing in Baton Rouge?
Uh, well, it might be Baton Rouge, there's some car dealers that we talking to here, uh, there's one local one that auctions off, uh, surplus vehicles, he might do it. Um, just, I don't want somebody to get the idea they can come walk up to City Hall and say, I'd like to buy that car, it, it can't work that way.
Okay.
So I had a motion by Councilman Dan Dahl and Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Thank you, thank you. Any more discussion? Am I good? Then please vote your machines. Okay, the chief would be happy. He can, he can move those cars alone. Five D.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four dash twenty and ordinance amending the budget to reflect funds received from the Drug Enforcement Agency and setting for public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
This is the money we received to buy some police equipment. Uh, do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion.
Representative Ricky Goslin and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Any discussion on this item?
That was a grant from the DEA?
Uh, that was some seizure money, I think.
Seizure money, yeah.
Federal seizure money.
Yep, yep.
Federal, federal?
Yes, sir, federal.
Okay. DEA.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Five D.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one and ordinance amending the budget to adjust for the lowest bid on the city park trail lighting upgrades project and setting for public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So move. Uh, Councilman Dan Dahl.
Second.
Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed. Any discussion? This is the project we talked about earlier. Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. Five F.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty-two and ordinance amending the budget to reflect transfer for the wastewater headworks and Pepperplex Road projects and setting for public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
We talked about the headworks, the other thing we need to talk about is, they gave me the permission and the money to buy the road access out for the Pepperplex, so we bought the property. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars max to put the road in, but I'm gonna have to do some kinda lighting. Uh, I do not wanna create a situation where you can go behind Lowe's, leaving the Pepperplex, we're gonna have a gate and the gate's figured in, but go out there, now that all the trees are cleared, it's really dark. So I'm a little concerned about that. So what we're gonna do is come from the end of Queen City, grab on the power there, go as far as I can and put a light or two. Come the other way from the soccer fields, because the new road runs along the soccer field and then goes through the new property we bought, catch the power there and put a couple of lights on that end. So it's the cheapest way I could get some lighting, but I'm just very concerned of, you know, what, what could happen back there in a weird spot, if I don't have any light.
So basically, this is a change order, for a hundred thousand?
Well, no, it's coming out of the TIF and then we're gonna bid it, so it's, it's.
I know, but originally, we were told five hundred thousand, right?
Right, well, five bought the property and put the road in, but five, I, I, I'm out of mon, I'm gonna be out of money. I mean, I realized from my budget, talking to my engineer, I do not have enough to put the lighting in as well. We never talked about lighting, if you wanna know the truth.
And that's my, that was my next point. It's like, um, you know, from the beginning, I've always hated when we like, don't know the full extent of the project. And to me, lighting should've been factored in, so we would've known in the beginning, we need six hundred thousand.
Right.
So, I hate when we come back and do this, cause then I can't keep calculating, I'm trying to remember how much that we spend.
Right.
And if it happens multiple times, I'm gonna lose count.
Okay.
You know, that's a problem for me.
It is, well, it came out of one account, which is the TIF district, so it's easy to keep track of, of how much we spent.
I know, but I'm just saying, when it comes up again, I wanna be able to say, Freddie, didn't we give you six hundred thousand?
Right, I understand.
So Mayor, the, the polls on those soccer fields are too far to get lighting from there to the road?
I, I went and looked at the last poll and said, maybe I can project, it, it's too far, it's too far.
And that's including the bridge?
Uh, the money of the two fifty for the road includes the box culverts that, we're calling it a bridge, it's just some big box culverts. That should be covered. Now, to hedge my bet a little bit, cause I am a scrounge, the, uh, detention pond that we're doing at the, uh, at Brooks District, that's gonna help the flooding in Acadian Acres, that's still going, that's good. Uh, when we bought the property, we got a bunch of treated poles, they held the nets up for the driving range. Well, guess where my light poles are coming from? So when we yank those up, I'm gonna use those as the light pole and I, and I'll make you the same deal. If some kinda way I have some money left out of that hundred, I'll put it back in the TIF.
Okay, so, could we not use some of the poles that we have, the free poles we get from CLECO? I mean.
Free poles we get from CLECO?
I mean, we have some, uh, poles that we, we get some extra poles every year, based on the contract that we sign. Could we not take those and put a few of them there, so we don't have to spend a hundred thousand?
No, those poles are like where we need it as a need for the electricity or a need for the lights.
We need lights, you just said we need lights there.
We gonna get a charge out of that one, I don't think, I don't think I can pull that off.
It's in the city limits, isn't it? We, we decide, they don't decide.
We can, and then they're gonna charge us for those lights.
Sure.
I mean, I know what you're saying, out of the two hundred lights that we're gonna get, whatever that number is, I gotta go look at the contract, whatever the number was of lights we would get, they would put the light up, but they're not putting the pole up for free and they're not running the power. In other words.
Are you sure? Cause I thought they.
Oh, yes ma'am, they're gonna, they're gonna replace a light where they, if they have any infrastructure, like if it's the transformer's not there, if the power line's not big enough, if there's no power there, they're gonna charge us for that.
So either way, we're spending money. We might spend less than a hundred thousand, though.
I'm hoping we do.
No, I'm saying with them.
I can research that, but I don't, I don't know.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out a way to not take the hun, extra hundred thousand out the TIF.
Right, I don't, I don't have one right now, but, like I said, I'll put it back if we think of one. And I'm a scrounge, I'm all about trying to, you know, do it as cheap as I can.
Just don't come back in too easy, say, you know what, we need twenty-five more. I'm just joking with you.
I gotta have some lights.
You know, I'm just messing with you.
It's okay.
Mayor, how many months out the year that the Pepperplex, uh, Brooke probably knows she's there all the time, uh, uh, is used?
It's never not used.
I mean, year round?
Yeah, there's something going on.
You can rent the fields anytime.
Well, why don't you have CLECO say, why don't y'all furnish us some lights and put a sign, lights furnished by CLECO?
I can try that, I got so many, I got so many crazy deals.
When you say kids, I mean, it's, it's not for us, it's for the kids.
I can add that in the mix. I have so many deals with CLECO and so many things pending, I don't know if they'd be willing to do that or not, I can ask them.
They gotta have some kinda fixtures they can give us.
It's a good idea, I'd be glad to ask them.
You know?
You don't know CLECO.
But, but I can ask them.
I know CLECO, they can't be in against me, I can, I know them. Oh, yeah, I was not like her, o, o, on a contract with them, they know me well.
Yeah, well, I have no problems.
I was there.
Oh, you were there?
Yeah, that's, that's the original, that's the original team.
Oh, yeah, dude, I was with the first contract.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We were there.
Y'all on the second team. Uh, anyway, I have no problem.
We did get a side deal, even though they're not really.
Well, we don't know if they're actually being held accountable yet.
No, it's a good, but this is a good idea. I'm gonna ask them. I mean, why not?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so if you give me the money and CLECO does it for free, I'll put the money back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
We have to do his ass.
So, with the discussion we've already had, now I need a motions.
Move.
Um, then pro Tim Ricky Goslin and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any other discussion before we vote? Then please vote your machines. Thank y'all, you're making me work hard tonight. It's all good, it's still fun. Uh, item six A.
Resolution number twenty-four fifty-one, a resolution in support of an application to the Office of the Lieutenant Governor, Department of Culture, Recreation and Tourism for the expansion of the West End Historic Cultural District.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. This is where we were trying to extend the cultural district in the West End, Jane's working hard on that and so is a whole group of people doing research and, and documenting, you know, buildings and, uh, so it's, hopefully it's something that's gonna happen, but we to the point that we needed a resolution. Questions, comments?
No, we appreciate all Ms. Jane's hard work on this. Thank you very much.
Cool, then, uh, please vote your machines, so we can keep it going. Thank y'all very much. Seven A.
Kevin Zaring to present budget to actual report for November first, twenty twenty-three through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, we couldn't wait.
This is the exciting part.
Yeah.
We have one more, we do have one more discussion item, but anyway.
So. What you have received has been amended to reflect some more information.
I think he did, so I can't, I got all my circles now, I can't circle nothing.
You'll find something to circle.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
I'm not saying a word.
I don't think that's good for Florida.
I'm not worried about that.
I'm gonna be surprised, I'm not saying a word.
Yeah, man.
Watch.
Oh, I hope I'm not. I'm not saying, I'm gonna let you ask all the questions then.
No, I'm, I'm good.
So we're doing this, um, budget actual through the end of March, which means five months, which should be at forty-two percent of budget. General fund budgeted thirty-one point eight million, we're at close to ten million, putting us at thirty-one twenty-six. And the expenses were budgeted at thirty-six point five million, we're at eleven point four, putting us at thirty-one point twelve percent. They're both below the forty-five percent, I mean, the forty-two percent, but they're within each other and that's to reflect that I'm moving money as it's needed, instead of putting it in according to the budget. Because in the end, I'd have to remove it out, or pull it back out.
Oh, I said I wasn't gonna say anything. God, dogged. So, is that the case for the police department?
The police department.
Cause they're at, the revenue's at thirty percent versus the forty-two where they should be.
Correct.
So you just haven't moved the money over?
I haven't moved the, the, um, sales tax dollars to.
So, may I ask why? Because their expenses are at forty-five percent.
Just at the time I looked at it, there were some expenses. We were trying to be proactive and get these to you quicker. Um, but some of it was expenses that had hit after I had done my budget transfer.
Okay, okay. You go ahead, come up. Thank you, I appreciate that answer.
Any other question? Nineteen sixty sales tax, budgeted revenue, ten point five million, actual is four point four million, putting you at forty-one point thirty-eight percent. Distribution's fifteen point four, actual's a three point seven, putting us at twenty-four point seventeen. Pepperplex TIF, eight hundred thousand, budgeted, actual's three forty-six, putting us at forty-three point twenty-one percent. Distribution's nine sixty-four thousand, we're at two hundred and nineteen. Percentage is at twenty-two point seven percent. Public safety tax, budget, uh, actual is four point two, actual is one point four, putting us at thirty-three point two four. And I apologize, I just realized I didn't update those numbers. Um, I will say though, as the last sales tax report we received, we are on target.
Okay.
So I'm confident to say that one is at the forty-something percent.
Okay.
Budgeted distributions, four point two, actuals, one point one, putting us at twenty-five point six percent. Highway fourteen TIF, budget three fifty-five, actual, one twenty-seven thousand. That one's leaving us at thirty-five point six five. That's the one that the, you know, we lost some money because of refunds in the beginning of the year.
Right.
We probably misfiled.
Yeah.
Distribution's of five hundred and three thousand two oh three. We're at nine hundred and ninety-nine, which puts it at point two percent. And that's because of the five hundred thousand that we're planning on transferring for the board. We ha- I haven't moved the money because we haven't had the expense yet.
Okay.
Spanish Trail TIF, thirty-one thousand, actual thirteen thousand, putting us at forty point two six percent. Distribution's two eighty-four, actual is ninety-one, putting us at thirty-two point oh four percent. Any questions so far? Parks and Recreation, revenue, two point two million, we're at seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Putting us at thirty-six percent. Parks, um, distributions or expenses, one point nine. Actual, six hundred and eighty-seven, thirty-five point six two. So that is distribution or transfers from the sales tax. Where they, as you can see, they don't have the expenses as budgeted, so therefore I haven't transferred the money as budgeted.
Okay.
Pepperplex. Revenue of three point eight, actuals eight hundred and fifty-eight, putting us at twenty-two point five six percent. Expenses are three point nine million, actuals four hundred and sixty-seven, putting me at twelve point oh, twelve point oh eight percent. That's another example. The revenue is below the forty-two, but at the same time, if you look at the expenses, they are below where we budgeted, so I haven't transferred money from the tax fund. Public Works, three point two million, budgeted, actuals one point seven, putting us at fifty-one point seven six percent. Expenses are three point seven million, ac- um, I mean, expenses are three point seven, actual is one point two. Putting us at thirty-four point oh two. The reason public works funds are high is because of the way we recognize the Adlorm ta- um, tax. We picked it all up in the beginning of the year versus picking one twelfth up each month. And that will level out at by the end of the year. Garbage Fund. Distribution's in, oh, I'm sorry, revenue is four point two, actual is at one point eight. Putting us at forty-one point thirty-five. Expenses are four point three, actual, one point four, putting us at thirty-two point seven eight. On that one, I'm gonna head and transfer the funds that were gonna be needed for what I was expecting by the end of the year. For that one, I'm gonna head and get and add that one down. Section eight vouchers, revenue of one point six million, actual is seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. We're at fifty point three four percent of revenue. Expenses are one point six, budgeted, actual, seven hundred and seventy-five, putting us at forty-eight point nine six. The revenue is higher, cuz Haley's been bringing in more than what we had budgeted or what we had expected. Waste water, budgeted revenues, four point nine million, actual is two point four, putting us at forty-seven point eight six. Expenses are seven point three million, actual is two point three, putting us at thirty-one point one four percent. And these numbers, I do adjust to try to pull out the, to even out the expenses and the revenue for the, the loans, the, um, for the SRFs, the bonds and grants. Because you don't recognize the revenue or you don't get the revenue until you spend it.
Let's ask one process question. So how do you determine which, um, funds that you don't, you don't transfer the money to versus the ones that you do? Because it's.
Because, well, most of them are large amounts, a million or something in the year. The garbage fund was not that large of an amount, so looking at a million, five million, it was what we call an immaterial amount, so I went ahead and transferred, because their expenses are set. They know what it's gonna be, because they give us the rate and they had to adjust it every year for the, um, cost of living.
So what's the benefit of not moving the money until the expenses are recognized? I mean, what's the, you know, what's the benefit?
The reason for it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, because I know we have this discussion almost every month. And I'm just trying to understand your process, because every month I'm asking, I feel like I'm asking the same questions.
Okay. So the garbage fund is, we know what it's gonna end up. It's gonna cost us this much. We know the households. And we know the cost per household. So the way I look at it, it's, it's, it's set, the expenses. Whereas the police, the fire, Pepperplex and the park, we don't know. Some of them are projects that we are going to be funding through sales tax. And I don't know when those projects from get done and if they're gonna be completed a hundred percent in a year. If I move the money, I'll be back here at the end of the year having to move the money back out.
That was one next question. So good, I'm glad you asked, you said that. Um, okay, it's just for me. It's just a little harder to follow just because, like, the police, I'm looking at it, I'm like, oh, my God, the revenue's thirty pers- thirty percent. And it's because you didn't move, you haven't moved the money yet. And I'm just trying to understand what's the benefit of leaving the money in the general fund versus moving the money to the account where it belongs and then at the end, putting it all back if you need to.
Because it's not coming out of the general fund.
Or whatever fund, I'm sorry.
It comes from, the police department is funded by the nineteen sixties tax.
The tax.
And the tax for the, um, public safety. Going forward, I'm, you know, I'm making attempts to go ahead and get it up to date. It just happened with the audit going on, this one.
Okay. All right. I'm just, you know.
Yes, ma'am. I, I hear what you're saying and I will take steps to, um.
And I, I'm not saying to change the process because I'm asking this question, but please don't hear me saying that. I'm just trying to understand so that I don't ask you the same questions over and over again. It's just, I'm trying to figure out which funds, when are you moving the money versus when you're not moving the money, so that when I look at this, I have a better idea of which ones you're doing, which ones you're not, because it's not always the same when we talk every month. So, okay. But I don't, please don't, I mean, that's between you and and Freddie. I mean, I, I'm not talking about your, I don't have anything to say about the process. I'm just trying to understand.
And it's not a big deal. I will just make a note to. Make that transfer before I give you all the reports.
Kevin, does that have anything to do with the interest bearing about taking the money and moving it? Do we make any money on the money before we move it, like a sweeping account or anything?
On the sales tax accounts, they're not set up as a sw- a sweep. They never were. That is something that we have, um, I've spoken to the banks about. Um, there are some restrictions on how that can be done. Uh, Chase had mentioned, they have a program that we can do that. We have not implemented it. Your interest is mainly is, no, or the one that's earning us the interest is the clearance account. And the, what we call the investment account, which are the fund balance accounts.
I just wanted, cuz I know that that could make a few dollars, but at some time it's not worth the hassle of doing it. Okay, I just wanted.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Kevin.
Right, our last item, uh, item A.
Discuss the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Partnership with Technical College for Sectoral Job Training.
Okay, this is one that I met with, uh, Thomas from SLCC. And, uh, the lady that handles all the endowments and, boy, I'm sorry, very nice lady, I'm forgetting her name. Anyway, we had a good meeting and this is the money that we would give for scholarships. So we have a hundred thousand dollars. This is more ARPA money. If we divide that by five thousand dollars a kid, that means we can send twenty kids and pay for their first year of SLCC and their books at that five thousand dollar rate. Now, talking to them, one of the big things, which is our choice of all of this every time, and the big discussion we had earlier, is how the selection gets made. Well, the school doesn't even select, SOCC doesn't even select their own scholarship kids. Or kids who are disadvantaged that they help. They have a third party. The third party looks at all of their financials. The third party does every kinda thing we were talking about earlier, and they make the recommendations. Well, what they don't wanna do is partner with us or anybody else and 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 change the way they do it, because they could have some issues. Why didn't my child get picked? You know, that kinda thing. So they offered that we would put the hundred thousand dollars up. We'd have the parameters, if they gotta be kids from New Iberia, you know, we can talk about how we can do that, but it would shortlist what we need to do. And they would use their third party and pick the kids. I kinda like that. I think that we have enough on our plate with all the other things that we're doing. Again, I wanna try to divide that equally, but we wouldn't really be picking them. We would let the school pick them. And so what we need to do, and this is just a discussion item, we need to come up with, just like on the other thing, that the parameters that one, keep us out of trouble, and number two, that makes sense to all of us. So if they're, uh, just as a beginning, if they're, you know, graduating, if they're a kid that goes to school in New Iberia, from New Iberia, then they need to have some need. Again, it can't be, I'm not picking on anybody, but you know, it's, it's gonna be kids who are disadvantaged, because that's the whole point of what we were trying to do. Um, but again, and the only way the school gives them is if they pass that school criteria, which is the only scholarships they really give are disadvantaged, you know, kids that need financial help. So I don't know how you do if the, you know, if it's, if the kid's eighteen, I don't know if they look at the, just the kid, or if they look at the parent, you know, I'm not sure. But we don't need to, however they do it is how I think on this one, we should just let it happen that way. So we're not gonna have a lot of work to do on this, and that's money that we could get out quickly, cuz the kids are graduating. Um, so I would like to maybe put this one on the next agenda, but I wanted to have a discussion and have some feedback. But when the school offered to do it and really was kind of, not only offering, was kinda saying that's how we, we want to do it. It kinda cut down on us having to do a whole lot of extra, invent something that's already there. You know? So I'll open it up for discussion. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, are you still planning to go to Westgate and Nish to make the announcement to say? Because there may, could be kids that are graduating that probably aren't planning to go to school because they think they don't have the money.
I, I agree. Yes, that's kinda why I was trying to get a discussion this time, vote on something next time. But if we know we're gonna do it, then I could really start now of, of contacting, uh, you know.
I think graduation's gonna happen before our next meeting.
I think it will. It will. But that's why we crammed this to put it on as a discussion item. Because if you tell me, go ahead and do it, then I'm gonna reach out to the schools, reach out to the school board, let them know that this is, this is out there. You know, because you're right, you could have a kid who, you know, wants to be a welder or an electrician and is just figuring out, gotta go get a job and learn that way, which is a way to do it, but you know, maybe not even thinking, hey, I could go to SLCC for a year.
Um, maybe don't exclude Catholic High too, because some of those kids are there on like a scholarship. Yeah. So I think to reach out to them too, to see if any of those kids that they have sponsorship or whatever, they get to Catholic High, maybe, maybe they're a candidate.
But, but, but I would think. I would think the third party would, would go out and solicit that they have the money and to go out and get applicants, I would think, huh?
I don't know. I don't know if they do.
Opportunity for New Iberia, the city of New Iberia to. No, but I'm saying, this is an opportunity, I mean, I think that Freddie, being the mayor of this city, needs to get credit. And this council needs to get credit for actually looking to try and help these kids. I mean, if we let somebody else do it and we don't even say that we were involved, they won't even understand that this money was invested for the children by this council. And I think that's an important message that has to go out as well.
Oh, I agree.
Okay. And that's something easy to do. I mean, I can put a, I can put a letter together tomorrow and get that out, you know? If, if, you know, that's what.
But not about picking the student.
No, cuz we're not gonna pick them. I just wanted to say, here's an opportunity for twenty kids to get a year at SLCC and their books by, you know.
On the city of New Iberia.
From the city of New Iberia.
It's just, it's a great thing that, that we're doing with the money. Yeah.
Thing that, you know, when we talked about, let's do, new money does new things, and we constantly trying to enhance our community, rebuild our community, reinvent our community. I mean, that's part of the main goal that, you know, that's what keeps us relevant. That's what keeps our government, you know, being really part of the community, is that we doing some stuff that I don't see anybody else did.
I think it's a big deal and I think.
You need to do it soon too, cuz seniors get out early.
No, I was.
Graduation is the third week in May.
Yeah, I agree.
And then they get out a week before that.
Get it out like now, not tomorrow.
And if, and if, if you're gonna go to the school or whatever to talk to, I think you make sure that the newspaper and the TV is there, cuz they come for everything else that's happening in New Iberia.
All the bad stuff.
Yeah, they come for this. This is an awesome thing. It's good press. Why not get some good press for once?
And if you write the article, it will get published.
Right. Talk about how you're doing some new and innovative things with this money that nobody else is doing. As election year people, I'm trying to help y'all out.
Not, not only that, not only that.
I'm blaming about that.
For years though. They gonna talk about that for years.
Yeah.
Say, well, New Iberia did for them.
Right. And, and maybe those kids don't leave. Maybe those kids stay here.
I mean, that's our kids. That's our future. So we need to do everything we can to keep them.
Go wrong when investing in kids.
Right.
You really can't.
Another answer to, y'all don't do nothing for the kids.
Yep, mhm. Exactly. And then you gotta market that, though. You gotta tell them that, what you're doing. Yep.
So we're gonna let the third party frame determine the criteria?
Yes. So our rules are pretty simple. They need to be from the city of New Iberia, and there needs to be a need. There needs to be a need.
They'll know how to do that.
Yes.
So I guess their address needs to be in the city, because Westgate's in a parish.
Yeah, right, right.
And Deidre, we're not, we're not making them come introduce themselves, right?
No.
That was a joke.
I know. No, but I think, I just feel like this is great. I mean, this is an awesome thing to do.
This is something that we.
Most communities aren't doing this stuff.
Came up with and the council said, let's do it, and it's a, you know, it's a good thing.
And once they, uh, are identified and enroll and everything, you know, we should maybe, you know, get their names and, and publicize that also, that they got these scholarships for us.
Also, because we let the school do it, they'll be eligible if there's any other scholarships that they can piggyback on with ours, which is really cool.
Exactly, exactly.
So if there's nothing, that was an easy one. If there's nothing further on that one, then that's what we'll do. We'll put something together. That's coming, that's coming. We'll put something together on this and, and get it out there. Now we move to comments, uh. Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, start with you.
Okay, so our last meeting was what, three weeks ago, whenever we had our chat with Pelicans? I am happy to report, I have maybe one complaint a week since then, which is amazing. Like, they've been doing really well. So the little chat helped out a little bit, so that's all I have. I just want to, you know, let everybody know that things have calmed down a little bit on my end with Pelican, so it's good news.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, it ain't picked up in my area. Just being honest, it ain't, it hasn't.
Yeah.
Maybe people hadn't been complaining. Oh, man, I know I hadn't done this in a while, thank God, I hadn't, but, uh, I wanna give the condol- give condolences to the Antoine family, uh, a dear friend of mine. He was a friend of the community, Eric Antoine. Uh, his dad was Mr. uh, Ira Edward Antoine, who owned, uh, the Royal Elite. It was a nice club. It was a prominent business. It is a prominent business, and Eric helped him run it. Eric was an asset to our community, in, in my opinion. He, uh, he knew business. He knew housing, he knew, um, uh, medical transportation. And he also knew the nightclub.
Huh? Credit repair.
Credit repair. Eric was a, Eric was a. Credit repair, Eric was a, Eric was a businessman and he left, uh, he will be missed. But he did leave an impact on the community because he taught a lot of people about some of the things that, uh, you know, I'm talking about. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so. Those kids going to be graduating, happy graduation to those kids. Nish, Catholic High, Westgate, happy graduation.
Yes, sir.
I see in my district, they're putting the cans in the yards, clearing up the little narrow streets we have. Get them out the street and put them in the yards. Live Oak Festival, Mr. Gosh, you and, uh.
It's a swear.
Y'all always promoting it. I went last, last, uh, weekend.
It was big.
Very nice. It looked like it grew.
It did.
About ten times bigger than I was last there. Man, they, they had a good time, so I appreciate y'all putting that on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Live Oak Festival was a great success. I'm sure Freddie can make a comment. I was there the whole time and selling beverages and helping out and the kids, barbecuing was a really good event. The Bayou Fest, the Bayou Run this weekend was well attended. That was a great event too, so, you know, events are being, uh, publicized and well attended by our community, which is a great thing. I mean, it's a great thing for families and kids, so I'm excited about that. And just on a side note, um, I, I was, I was, unfortunately got involved in a incident with a juveniles jumped over the business and into a pool. We had to call law enforcement and I want to tell you guys, our law enforcement is very professional. They handled it with the juveniles just like I thought they would and I was very impressed and I thanked them. And, uh, you know, if we have officers like these two gentlemen, I'm proud to be a, a city representative for these guys, really am.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Well, um, we do have another five K run walk, um, coming up Saturday. It will start at Bank Avenue Park. And it's a, a partnership between Guardo Court number one twenty-nine and the city of New Iberia. The registration onsite and right now is twenty dollars. Following, well, pre, if you register onsite, it starts at seven, registration starts. And the run itself starts at eight o'clock. Following the run will be a health fair. We have vendors, Iberia Medical Center will be there, Iberia Comprehensive will be there, Acadian Ambulance, um, Planet Fitness. Medicare, somebody from Medicare and Medicaid also. So, um, just come on out, they're going to be doing blood, um, pressure checks as well as blood sugar checks. So, um, come on out and, you know, have a, a good time. We're going to have fresh fruit, you know, to give out and of course, water. So, um, if you're not doing anything, you don't have to actually do the run walk, you can just come to the health fair. Everybody's invited, so come on out and join us on Saturday in Bank Avenue Park from eight to eleven. Thank you.
Is that better, that's this Saturday?
This Saturday. This Saturday, May the eleventh.
I guess you're assuming we're going to all finish before eleven o'clock. I'm joking. Okay, so I want to thank everybody who came out to the community baby shower that was held last week. Um, I hope you guys enjoyed it, got some great gifts. Second, I'd like to remind everybody that this Friday, we have another mobile market in Weston Park. We're going to be out there from ten AM to twelve. We're also going to have some vendors. We're going to have, um, some people doing some health stuff as well. So please come out, I mean, if you've ever been to one of the mobile markets, you know that there's a lot of fresh fruit and it's cheap. I mean, you walk away with bags and bags of food and it doesn't cost you a whole lot. So please come out and join us, come and get you some fresh food. If you don't need it, make sure that, you know, you tell your neighbors and have them come out and get it. Last time, we sold out by eleven thirty and so we had to pack up because we had so many people came out. We've asked them to bring extra food this time, so we shouldn't run out, so please come out and, but don't wait till the last minute, come early. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say we had, uh, I had a really good experience with the police department, had someone still in air condition. And I called and they were right there. Caught the person, prosecuted him right away, very professional. And, um, and I'm just saying, I hear nothing but good things about the service they're giving to, to people in New Iberia when they in need. It's just a good thing. And, um, don't forget it's Mother's Day coming up, you know. Wish everybody Mother's Day and, and the ones that still have their mo, my mom is going to be ninety-five next week, so I'm lucky.
Yay.
You know, yeah.
That's cool.
So that's all cool. And my mom used to work at City Hall, believe it or not, she was secretary for Mr. Allen Day. So mom, Happy Mother's Day, because she watches it and she, some says, where is the lady next to you? She's not there.
She's my fan, I love her.
She is your fan. So anyway, have a good weekend, thank y'all.
Great, ma'am, I hate to do this before you, but somebody, I wanted to announce something else that's coming up.
Sure.
Um, it's an Iberia Mental Health Summit. It's, uh, Saturday, June the eighth. It's going to be in the Weston Park from ten to two. So that's Saturday, June the eighth, Iberia Mental Health Summit, Weston Park, from ten to two. And Happy Mother's Day too, Happy Mother's Day, Aunt Peggy.
Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers.
That's it. I don't have too many, uh, just remember the Veterans Memorial Event is May twenty-seventh, starts at five o'clock downtown at the Veterans Memorial. And then, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about, I've sent y'all the information, remember that starting tomorrow. Wednesday, Thursday and Friday is the Midsize City Conference where we have about twenty-five plus mayors coming. And y'all are invited to come by, you know, some of the workshops and, you know, the events that we have. So I sent that out there to y'all earlier and with that, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.